Meeting for February seventh, two thousand twenty-two. I am calling this meeting to order at five thirty P M. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section five four nine five three subdivision E and the recommendation of the Ventura County Health Officer issued September twenty first, two thousand twenty-one, following social distancing recommendations and deter- and determination most recently by the City Council on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The public was informed in advance of the meeting how to submit all public comments to our city clerk and all submissions will be read into and part of the official meeting record. May we take, Madam Clerk, will you please take roll?
Councilmember Gama?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Mayor Pretem Rollins, I'm sorry, Mayor Pretem Martinez?
Present.
And Mayor Rollins?
Here. Madam Clerk, are there any closed session general public comments?
Where I've not received any written public comments, however, we do have two members of the public attending. And this is your opportunity to speak if you guys would like to provide any general public comments or comments pertaining to the one closed session agenda item.
So I recognize three people, Jesse Luna, Curtis Fichtner, I guess, and Danny Correo. Uh, I guess, are all three of those the people that are from the public that want to speak?
Mister Correo and Jess Luna are individuals that potentially might speak on this item.
Okay, so let us first have Mister Correo. You got the mic.
Very good. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Rollins, members of the council, city staff, Danny Correo, S C I U seven two one, Tri-County Regional Director. I'm here today to thank the council for doing the right thing by listening to workers and taking steps to ensure equity as you provide special pay. But I'm also here to ask the council to listen to us again. With this pandemic, we have critical problem where newer employees can instantly be put in a difficult situation where if they get sick with COVID, they have no additional support during these trying times. Please help our new workers, those who will be the future of this city, to bridge the hours when they get sick, even if that means carrying a negative hours bank until we're able to get through this COVID crisis. We're also asking the council to allow the this negative hours bank for workers who have exhausted their annual leave bank. City workers put their lives on the line by being on the front lines every day and need support to be able to continue providing world-class services for this city. Our city of Port Wenomee residents deserve that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister Correo. At this point in time, can I have Mister Luna speak?
Hi there, I was not planning on speaking, I'm here in support of Mister Correo.
Okay, well, great. So, uh, Mister City Attorney, could you please read the closed session item into the record? Do we, do we have to make sure now that those people are not with us?
Uh, that will be following the closed session announcement, we'll recess to closed session and our I T people will make sure they're held in a different room.
Okay.
We have one item on the agenda for closed session tonight. It is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-four nine fifty-seven point six. The agency designated representatives are Brad Connors, City Manager, Charles Parretts, Deputy City Manager, and myself, City Attorney. Uh, the employee association is S C I U Service Employees International Union Local seven twenty-one.
Okay, uh, do any councilmen, do any council members have any conflicts to disclose for the listed closed session agenda item? Uh, hearing now, hearing none, the time is now five thirty-five and the City Council will recess to closed session.
To the regular city council meeting of February 7, 2022. I am calling this meeting to order. The time is now 6:30. Please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
To the flag of the United States of America And to the Republic For which it stands One nation Under God Indivisible With liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, Subdivision E, and the recommendation of the Ventura County Health Officer issued September 21, 2021, following social distancing recommendations and determination most recently by the City Council on January 18, 2022. The public was informed in advance of this meeting how to submit all public comments to our city clerk, and all submissions will be read into and part of the official meeting record. Live public participation is accessed through our meeting Zoom link published on the agenda, and we highly encourage and welcome the community's participation. Those attending will have multiple opportunities throughout the meeting to provide comments. Madam Clerk, will you please take roll call?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Present.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes, here.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Present.
And Mayor Rollins?
Here.
All present.
Very good. Tonight, we are going to have Councilperson Perez lead us or give us her inspiration.
Thank you. I've spoken about my children and my husband, two groups of people who are the biggest part of inspiration for most things in my life and what I do. There's another person who has inspired me for the simple fact of her dedication to the cause, and that cause is mental health, and that person is Maya Zumaya. You all know Maya. She has volunteered at many Port Waimi events. But Maya has Maya is with NAMI and involved with several other nonprofits, Mission Fish, Salvation Army, Lions Club, Veteran Mentor Project. And I first met Maya before being elected. I don't even recall how we met. We had a conversation about mental health and what I wanted or I was hoping to do for my community. I told her that I wanted to wait until after the election, and then we would reconnect to see where we go from there. So that happened, and then we started the First Responders for Mental Health Initiative, where we raised money for NAMI, and we put that together very quickly. And when it comes to mental health and helping those who need assistance, Maya is a force to be reckoned with. She has, like I said, she's volunteered and participated in many of our own Port Waimi events. For her own 40th birthday, she organized a toy drive for her community. She digs in with her heart and goes all out, even to her own exhaustion. There have been several times where she has sent me a text saying, "I have three events that I have to do in two weeks, and I don't know how I'm going to do it," and she manages to get them done flawlessly and without issue. Let me see. She will stop at nothing to get things done. That's what made the Mental Health Initiative so successful at such a short period of time. She had the ability to reach places that I could not. Her schedule allowed her to make many connections, and we made many connections during that initiative. And right now, we're gearing up for the next one coming in May. She has the ability Her drive comes from her own life experience and her children. You give her an event to put together or a fundraiser you need done, and she will make it happen. I don't know where she gets the energy she has to do all these things, but she finds it. Sometimes has multiple going on at the same time. And she was already thinking of our next Mental Health Initiative event before the 2021 year even ended. That's how dedicated she is to that cause, and that's my inspiration.
Well, thank you very much. We need more people in the world like her. Mr. City Attorney, can you please provide the closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. We had one reportable action in closed session tonight. Government Code Section 54957.1 requires any action taken in closed session to be reported out to the public. In this matter, the council unanimously decided not to approve a side letter agreement with SEIU that would have front-loaded approximately 39 hours of leave time for COVID in the event a new employee or seasoned employee was without a accrued leave and found themselves having to quarantine in COVID. So that's our reportable action.
Excuse me?
City Attorney Spalding, would you be able to say anything about the state proviso or not?
Sure, I can discuss the state proviso, but I wouldn't go into the council deliberations in that. Essentially, the state today, Governor Newsom signed a new law into effect that essentially gives workers who find themselves exposed to COVID-19 and unable to attend work due to mandatory quarantines, it provides up to 80 hours of compensated leave time retroactive to January 1, 2022.
Great, thank you. We're now into the general public comment. We will now hear any general public comments not pertaining to items on the agenda, including those written comments received by our city clerk. Any comments from those who are participating live with us this evening? We would like to ask you to use Zoom's Raise Your Hand feature so we can call on you during the appropriate comment times. This will be the same process for comments pertaining to each agenda item as well. Staff will unmute your mic, and you will have three minutes to provide comments. Does anyone have public comments tonight, Madam City Clerk?
Sir, I see Mr. Brian Fomenko's hand up first.
Great. Mayor Rollins, council members, and city staff. My name is Brian Fomenko. I've been with the City of Port Waimi for many years, as some of you may know. I'm here tonight to say thank you for making us whole with regard to the COVID hero pay. It's a great morale boost to our city members to know that you guys heard us. We appreciate that. We also wanted to let you know that the Port Waimi members are excited about the upcoming bargaining with the city. We want to open up channels and communications with the council to avoid confusion and so that we're on the same page with critical issues within the city. For instance, we are and have been losing staff, and it's not just due to attrition. We just aren't competitive anymore. Workers are leaving. They're going to other jurisdictions where they're more competitive on salaries and benefits. We are also having a tough time bringing new workers in for the same reasons. So we're looking forward to bargaining in good faith, and we hope that the city can become more competitive and improve recruitments, retention of our workers for the city and for the residents that we serve. It's a shared goal, and our hope that we can work together to solve all these issues. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fomenko. Do we have our next person, Madam?
I see Kendall Lucine's hand up.
Okay. Who have you unmuted?
You have three minutes there.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, city council members for the City of Port Waimi, Mr. Mayor Rollins, Mayor Protem Martinez, and Mr. City Manager, Mr. Connors. For the record, my name is Kendall Lucine, and I am the Community Planning Liaison Officer with Naval Base Ventura County. I am here this evening to share a brief announcement that I think would be in the best interest for the City of Port Waimi to at least know, and that is the Navy Naval Base Ventura County will be participating in an annual force protection exercise from January 31 through February 11. The exercise or exercise Citadel Shield Solid Curtain is conducted by Commander of US or United States Fleet Forces Command and Commander of Navy Installations Command on all Navy installations in the continental United States. The exercise is not in response to any specific threat, but is a regularly scheduled exercise. The exercise is not in response to any specific threat, but is a regularly scheduled exercise the Navy participates in annually. Exercise Citadel Shield or Solid Curtain 2022 is designed to enhance the training and readiness of Navy security forces and ensure seamless interoperability among the commands and other services and agency partners. The Navy is an integral part of the community and committed to being a good neighbor. The Navy is committed to keeping the public informed about any potential impacts of the exercise to prevent undue public concern about the scenario threat and potential impacts to traffic and services in and around the bases. Here locally, communities should see our bases as business as normal with some increased military activity as a result of the exercise. Our sailors will be perfecting their tactics, training and procedures, and honoring their skills to ensure they remain the premier fleet fighting force, ready and able to defend our nation every day. Please note, council members and community members for the City of Port Juani, the Navy or Naval Base Ventura County has already implemented land use control measures to minimize disruptions with local communities and to normal base operations. But there may be at times when the exercise causes increased traffic in and around the bases or potential delays in traffic queuing for those attaining base access. Area residents may see or hear security activities associated with this exercise. Advanced coordination has also taken place with local law enforcement and first responders. For more information about potential impacts due to the exercise, we encourage the City of Port Juani to follow the Navy or Naval Base Ventura County Facebook page. I provided a link to Madam Clerk. For additional information beyond that, we encourage anyone to contact our Naval Base Ventura County Public Affairs Office at 805-989-9234. Again, that number is 805-989-9234. Thank you for your time and attention.
Mr. Lawson, could you repeat the date of that?
Certainly. It is... Well, it started January 31st, and it will end on February 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we have our next speaker?
Sir, I see Mrs. Cynthia Ross.
Um, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, Cynthia.
Okay, sorry. Okay, well, I sent a letter in, so if they're planning on reading it, they don't have to because I'm going to read it here. I'm here to bug the city for safer streets once again. And I wrote, "Hello, this is Cynthia Ross from the Volker neighborhood. I have talked with the mayor and city council. I have talked to the police. I have talked to my neighbors and have over 120 signatures on a petition. I am now hoping to get the attention of the city planners in order to make our streets safe. I am attaching an advertisement from a law firm I found online called AutoAccident.com." On their website, they have a section specific to Port Juani, and here is what it reads. "Port Juani fact: Do you know what intersections are considered dangerous in Port Juani? In 2013, Port Juani experienced a total of 45 collisions in which 61 victims were injured. Several of those collisions occurred at intersections. The intersections with the most accidents were Juani Road, Surfside Drive, Channel Islands Boulevard, and Wheelhouse Avenue. In fact, one person lost their life at the intersection of Channel Islands Boulevard and Wheelhouse Avenue that year. So it's important to be extra careful while you are driving through that intersection. Personal injury lawyers in Port Juani..." And they give their phone number "for free and friendly advice." Now note here, the information this law firm is using is from 2013. This law firm has been making money off the dangerous roads here in Juani for close to 10 years, if not more. This is so not right. And it is only a matter of time until the city... It's only a matter of time till they make more money. For a second, please think about all the sadness that goes along with those crashes and all the extra work our police officers have to handle. I'm sure it's not their favorite part of the job. I am writing in a way to alert you to this information in order for the city to save a lot of money. I love this city. I love our police department and city council. So please, please, let's stop this madness. What the city needs is to install a signal at Lido and Channel Islands, a keep clear and no U-turn sign at Volker and Channel Islands, and to slow the speed down to 35 miles an hour along Ventura Road and Channel Islands. Let people enjoy our city. Look at the beautiful eucalyptus trees that line our streets. Ride their bikes to the beach. Really enjoy our little beach community. This may sound expensive, but it's a one-time cost that will save lives. Thank you for your time, and please, let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Our next speaker?
Sir, I don't see any hands raised. Please let me know by raising your hand if anybody else attending would like to speak. Now is the time.
So now, do we have some written comments?
Thank you. There's so many people attending. I'm scrolling through both pages just to make sure that we don't miss anybody. I do, being that Ms. Ross attended tonight, I am down to just one public comment written submitted. It was submitted Friday, February 4th at 5:56 PM from Mark McLernan, and it reads, "I'm a 50-plus-year resident of Ventura County and a 10-year resident of Port Juani, and I have supported all of you in your elections. I had confidence that you would make the appropriate decisions, but I have been disheartened. I wrote to you in August of last year expressing the urge for you to find a replacement for Mr. Connors in hopes that a competent person who has experience as a city manager would be found. At the time, there were several social media posts about poor employee morale and no confidence in Mr. Connors and the city administration. That seems to continue. The last city council meeting was embarrassing, as there was a public display of gross incompetence from the city administration, again led by a leader with a lack of experience. At the public hearing regarding the Darbida cannabis event, it was discovered that no revenue was collected at the last cannabis event. How is this possible? Watching Mr. Connor shuffle around, sitting in silence and providing zero answers shows he lacks experience and should never have been selected from the outset. Many of us longtime citizens were wary of the passage of cannabis, but understood the decision as it did provide a substantial financial benefit to the city. However, to find out, we did not even collect the thousands of dollars of revenue at this event is ridiculous. Allowing the mismanagement and incompetence to continue is a disservice to the residents and gives the city a poor reputation. Why do you continue to allow it? What is it going to take? Are we waiting for the lawsuits that have plagued the city in the past? Please do not hold council meetings under the direction of an unprepared city administrator. It hurts to watch. It seems every city council meeting starts with a letter about how city administration has fumbled or mishandled something. Here is another one to add to the list that I'm sure will continue to grow. At the last council meeting, an employee's letter was read, and the disappointment was obvious. Employees appear to be feeling unvalued and suffering from low morale. Mr. Mayor, at your first meeting as mayor, fellow citizen Juan Aragon spoke about his experience and how he was treated unprofessionally and disregarded by the city manager. This person wanted help with his permit. At the conclusion of the meeting, his concerns were ignored yet again. Are you holding the city manager accountable? Are you looking into this, Mayor? I have asked that you please look into this and help Mr. Aragon and find out why he was mistreated. You were all elected to make sometimes very difficult decisions for the benefit of the city. It's time to look for a leadership change. Sincerely, Mark McLernan." And that concludes my written public comments. Again, if there's anybody from the public who's attending who would like to speak for general public comments, now would be the time.
Okay, then. So now we will move to the agenda approval. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda tonight?
Motion to approve. Second?
Madam Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All righty. We will now move to our first presentation, the Cross Base Pipeline Extension. And that presentation will be given by Mr. Villafano, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Rollins. Tonight, I'm going to give an update of on the Cross Base Pipeline Extension. And we have a consultant here that's also going to be part of that presentation. If I could have shared the screen rights, please?
Yeah, you have them done.
Okay, thank you. Good evening again. The City of Port Juani had a water distribution system master plan prepared in August of 2011 by AKM Consultants. And it was to address our aging infrastructure. And as a brief recap, I wanted to talk about our existing infrastructure. The potable water system includes nearly 47, a little over 47 miles of transmission and distribution system pipes ranging in size from 2 inches to 14 inches in diameter. Approximately 26% of the system was installed before 1960, 30% during the 1960s, and 22% in the 1970s. AKM Consultants prepared our water master plan, and we have $30 million plus in recommended capital improvement projects to address our aging infrastructure over the next 12 years. The main water transmission line in Ventura Road is over 70 years old. It's a ductile iron pipe, and replacing it would be very disruptive. The Cross Base Pipeline Extension project will be much less disruptive than replacing the line in Ventura Road. The new main will provide redundancy to the north portion of the city and create a loop system. It will also address some issues with fire flow at the north end of the system. This will also be a benefit to the Navy because they have issues on the Navy base with water flow and pressure at the northwest corner of the base. So it would provide an option for them to be tied into the loop system up there. It would also potentially be of benefit to the Beach District, the Channel Islands Beach Community District, because it would offer them an option also for an additional connection if ever needed at the north end of their service area. And at this time, I'd like to bring on Heather O'Connell with WREA. They're a local engineering firm with over 30-plus years of experience. And they've done this type of work for other cities, City of Ventura, many local water districts. So at this time, Heather, would you go ahead and narrate?
Don, thank you for the introduction. And good evening, council members. Thank you for your time and allowing us to present an overview of this critical infrastructure project and provide you with a status update. Next slide, please. So we're just going to go ahead and write in with our proposed alignment. Just to orient you, north is to the left of the screen. So this graphic depicts the overall alignment as preliminarily designed. The alignment you can see in blue is overlaid onto the aerial map. In general, the alignment runs north-south, adjacent to Victoria Avenue. The pipeline is approximately 7,100 linear feet of new 18-inch pipe, so a little bit over a mile and a quarter, starting in the south end in Panama Drive in the Silver Strand community, extending northerly between the west side of the base and the east side of Victoria Avenue. The pipeline extension will terminate on the north side of Channel Islands Boulevard, where it will cross over the existing tidally-inflamed Stormdrain Channel in the center of Channel Islands Boulevard. Once over the channel, the pipe will connect into the City of Port Juani's existing 12-inch pipeline located on the north side of Channel Islands Boulevard. So during the course of our preliminary efforts, we explored several different alignment alternatives, on-base, off-base, and a combination of both. The alternative presented here is the selective preferred alignment, which is exclusively off-base with the exception of the location where we would intertie with the existing Cross Base Pipeline. So the very top graphic shows a representative cross-section of the alignment, meaning essentially looking at the pipe as it is in the ground and looking north. The left side of that graphic shows the paved area of Victoria right-of-way. Where we are proposing to put the pipeline, you can see the blue circle kind of in the center of that graphic. We're proposing to put that pipeline in a dirt shoulder that is a parcel owned by the County of Ventura. The proposed 18-inch pipe would purposely be placed outside of the traveled way of Victoria Avenue right-of-way in order to minimize traffic and construction disturbances as much as possible. The design proposed to keep a fairly shallow depth under the ground surface with a concrete cover over the pipeline to provide for sufficient truck loading capacity, but also serves to avoid utility conflicts and potential problems with high groundwater. Next slide, please. So this is to give you a background of the infrastructure, what is existing, what is in place at this point in time. The existing pipeline is shown in red. The existing 24-inch Port Juani Water Agency pipeline extends from the treatment plant to just east of the Navy base. Then in 1997, the line was extended across the base with an 18-inch pipeline extension. PHWA contracted the design and installation, but the project was paid for by the Channel Islands Beach Community Services District. The current pipeline extension terminates on the west side of the base, just inside base property, adjacent to Panama Drive, where it ultimately ties into the existing Channel Islands Beach Community Services District distribution pipelines. The blue line indicates a part of our proposed project, which would be the starting point of the 18-inch pipeline extension. And next slide, please. So this is another, just a zoomed-in version, so you can maybe see the roadways a little bit more clearly. The right side of the screen being the east side of the Navy base, near Pleasant Valley Road and Ventura Road intersection area. Then the existing Cross Base Pipeline proceeds westerly to the west side of the base. Again, the blue line depicts the beginning of this currently proposed project. Next slide. So this presents an overview of the city's water distribution service area. On the right-hand side of your screen, you'll see the... In the white area, which is representative of the Navy base, which essentially bifurcates the city's current water system. The right again is the 18-inch Cross Base Pipeline. The blue is this project with the proposed 7,100-foot linear foot extension. The project serves to hydraulically connect the city's service area with a looping condition, creating redundancy in the city's system, as well as enhancing the capability to provide critical domestic water service and fire flows to the northern areas of the city's service area. On the left is a zoomed-in area where the extension would be starting in Panama Drive, which is in County right-of-way. Next slide, please. This graphic again depicts the overall alignment on the left. On the right, we show the north end or the terminus of the project. That is the intersection of Victoria Avenue and Channel Islands Boulevard. The intent is to hug the, the shoulder, the right, the south shoulder of Channel Islands Boulevard, jog easterly and cross over the flood control district channel, and ultimately connect to the city's twelve-inch pipeline. This alignment is preferable to interrupting traffic flows directly in the intersection because this is a critical and busy location. Next slide, please. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and hand it over to Erica, one of our team engineers at WREA. And she will highlight and show us some of the comparisons and advantages of utilizing the Victoria Avenue alignment versus replacing the pipeline in Ventura.
Thank you, Heather. I, as Heather mentioned, we did look into both having the pipeline along Ventura Road and Victoria Avenue. As Dawn brought up, with the master plan completed in 2011, it called for replacing the line in Ventura Road. But per that master plan, as you can see on the left image here, that line was installed in the 1940s, so it's definitely aging infrastructure. And so we were looking at the constructability and traffic impacts of both of these alignment options. So on the left side, you can see that's the intersection of Ventura Road and Pleasant Valley, which is where the pipeline would be starting if we were aligning it over there. It's a very busy intersection, many lanes of traffic, some commercial area as well. So there would be heavy impacts to do construction on that side. On the right image, that is where the beginning of the alignment is on Victoria Avenue. So that lower section is where we've been showing that connection point down by Panama and the base. And then you can actually see the beginnings of that dirt shoulder that we are planning to utilize along Victoria Avenue that'll take most of the construction out of the traveled way. Next slide, please. These images then show the end of the alignment, where the line would terminate and tie into other existing infrastructure. Again, on the left side, that's the Ventura Road and Channel Islands Boulevard intersection. Many lanes of traffic. Again, there's commercial area, lanes merging and lots of traffic lights. So doing any construction there and having to cross that intersection would have major impacts to traffic as well. And then on the right side, we have our proposed design for the Victoria and Channel Islands Boulevard intersection. As Heather mentioned, we would be planning to hug basically the west outside of the Navy's fence line and as far out of the traveled way of Victoria as we can in utilizing that shoulder space as much as possible. And then in Channel Islands, we would be crossing in one area over the Oxnard drain there, but utilizing some existing crossing space for that. Next slide, please. This image just highlights that dirt shoulder on Victoria. So we have nearly three thousand linear feet out of our seven thousand-foot pipeline design that could be constructed outside of the traveled way, minimizing many construction and traffic impacts. Next slide. Finally, we wanted to give an overview of both, the full lengths of both alignment options. So on the top image, you can see that's Ventura Road, the stretch all the way from Pleasant Valley on the, the right side of the screen to Channel Islands on the left side. So there's around eight major intersections circled there that we would have to cross through for construction. Versus on Victoria on the lower image, there is three intersections, mainly at the beginning and end of the pipeline. And then that one in the middle is the Victoria Gate to the base, which does not see as much traffic as many of the intersections do on Ventura Road. Next slide.
Okay, so we're just presenting our estimated project timeline. We are currently in approximately forty percent complete with preliminary design. We're working with the project team to present a fifty percent completion progress plans, hydraulic calculations, specifications to the city by late spring. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Dawn so we can discuss the goals of the project timeline.
Thank you, Heather and Erica. You know, our goal is to have a set of plans ready to go out to bid by the end of this year and be out to bid in January of 2023 and award the project in March. So that is our goal, and I believe that's, that is an attainable schedule at this time. And I'd like to thank WREA. And if the council has any questions, please go ahead and ask.
Okay, Councilperson Perez.
I'm sorry if it was already mentioned, but is, what's the fiscal impact for this?
This is, comes out of the enterprise funds. We have been collecting in anticipation for this, we've adjusted. We had our rate study done and the capital projects built into our rate so that we do have the funds available to do this. We, prior to, I believe, almost anyone on the council here, we had that rate study done by Raff Tellis. And when it was finally adopted, we had, I believe possibly, Councilmember Hernandez was on board at the time. But we stretched out the, the timeline so that we could stretch out our funds. We have approximately thirty million dollars plus, and we do have the funds available to go through this and do the recommended capital projects. So it has no, no, no general fund impact. This is all enterprise fund, water enterprise fund.
Thank you.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rollins. And thank you to the representatives from WREA who presented and Mr. Villafano for the excellent presentation. It's really nice to see the details lined out for this particular project. I know you've been working on it for a long time and had come up with the idea of using Victoria Avenue versus Pleasant Valley Road. I'm real familiar with this area because I lived very close to it. And I think it's an excellent idea to use Victoria Avenue, especially because of that large area that you have along Victoria to work with, which will hopefully not interrupt traffic as much as it would on another street. So I just want to say thank you and I'm supportive of the project. I think it's cost-efficient and, and well-thought-out and thank you. That's all I have to say.
I just want, oh, no, I'm sorry. I said, Councilperson Gama, I see your hand.
Just wanted to check my hearing. So we're looking at this project getting started over a year from now, is that correct?
That is correct. We, we'll be out to bid at this time, or we'll be just about the close of the bid time. So we expect to award this project next March.
Next March. Okay, well, it's a long time. And I know we've been talking about this since we first got sworn in. And I look forward to it getting done. Thank you for the great work.
I have just one comment. It seems like this alternative is a win-win situation. It's going to keep our commerce going better without disruption. Was there any downside to this at all? Is it costing us any more money than the alternative? It seems like a no-brainer to go with the alternative that you're recommending.
There's always, certainly from a logistics and construction standpoint, this is more cost-effective. Trying to dig up Ventura Road would be a nightmare because it would have to be staged. We would be constricting traffic to both the port and the base. We, there's, we have to keep the existing line in operation while we're digging. So logistically, it, it would really be a nightmare. So this is more cost-effective. And, you know, there's still regulatory issues you have to go through. You have to deal with environmental permitting, that's one of the long lead items. We do have to get encroachment permits from the county of Ventura and the city of Oxnard. But I've been in contact with my county counterparts and for over a year now. And they're in agreement that this is a good project. And I've reached out to Oxnard and I'll be doing that again. So, you know, those are some of the things that we do have to get done. But I, I believe it's a win-win project.
Well, thank you for developing this alternative. Councilperson Hernandez, you had your hand raised a moment ago, you?
Yeah, with due my question, I, I found the answer in, in the report here, so thank you.
Well, thank you again for the report. Looking forward to the future. Good water supply is something all communities need. Okay, we will now move on to our second presentation, the COVID-19 update by Mr. Madelon.
Well, good evening, Mayor Mayor Protan, City Council and staff, and welcome into the February installment of the COVID-19 presentation. And let's go ahead and get started. All right, as always, I asked that you save your comments, questions, or concerns for the end of the presentation, and I will do my very best to answer them at that time. To reflect your, the memory here, on January 18th was our last meeting. And that reporting window was from November 12th to January 18th. So those numbers on the left represent our last meeting. Numbers on the right, as always, represent where we are today. So what you can see, just kind of going through line by line, we're at about 2.8 million people tested or tests completed. Between the November and January window, there was about 411,000 tests done. In three weeks of a window, roughly two and a half, there's been 227,000 tests taken. So lots of folks are being tested when our last reporting window. Positive cases, we have 40,000-plus cases reported just in the two and a half weeks since our last council meeting. Whereas in the previous meeting, there were from November to January, 26,000 cases. Deaths in the county are up, ninety-three additional deaths as related to COVID-19. On our ICU is up five. I did get numbers as of today, which came in about 5:15 before city council meeting started. And there isn't a whole lot of change, but there are five more to add to that. So we do currently have forty in ICU. In the same time period of the two and a half weeks here locally in Port Wayne Eme, we've gone up to a total of forty-eight-hundred-plus cases with 1,279 reported in the two and a half weeks. And when we do the math, it's about a thirty-five percent increase from the previous reporting period. Deaths in Wayne Eme are at thirty-six, so we have two more here locally. And our active case rate, we are at 224. Again, this was reported as of Friday, but I do have the new numbers in front of me and they aren't significantly different. On this particular slide, you'll see green and red. Green is trending in a direction we want, red is not. Our average seven-day case rate per 100,000 is 108, a pretty significant decline from 227 for the last reporting period, which is what we want to see. Our seven-day positivity rate, so how often are tests becoming back positive? We went from 24.5 to 14.1. Again, a very nice turn. Still have a lot of work to do, but trending in the right direction. And then our health equity seven-day positivity rate, this is representing some of our disadvantaged population, folks who may not have the same ability to get access to healthcare and whatnot, jumped from 24 to 34. However, I can report as of today at 5:00 PM, that number is now being reported at 25. So it looks like we're in about the same position we were when I gave this last presentation. So looking at it this way, our numbers are trending down. Current hospitalizations are reported on Friday at 213. They've only gone up by two in this go-around. So as of this evening, they're reporting at 215. So they are, they are well below what they were our last reporting period. Moving on, you guys know I like to do historical data and kind of look at where we were in the past to where we are now and, and kind of get a bigger idea of what we're looking like. So I always use this slide on every one of my presentations back in March of 2021, just because we were doing the purple tier and all of those that allowed us to either be open or not. And I just wanted to point out, 9.1 was back then, we're at 108.2. So you can see obviously we're significantly higher. Three and a half positivity rate to 14 and 6.8 to 34.2. So again, numbers trending down, but we still have plenty of room to, to go there. Vaccines, so let's talk about getting those for a moment. You can see on our last meeting, we're at about 78.2, we're at roughly 80%. Eighty percent was kind of the talked-about number for quite a while to get the county to, and it looks like we are trending right there. And in fact, the numbers I got today have us exactly at 80% with 82.4% getting at least one dose. So we are still tracking, we are still moving up. But again, as you'll see a little bit later in the presentation, we want to encourage folks to continue to get vaccinated and boosted as well. One thing to point out today, and the county of Ventura put it out in an email, and I'd like to share it with you, and that is a little bit of discussion about what is defined as vaccinated? Is it, you've had a two-series dose plus a booster? You've had one dose of the two-series dose, or what is it? So the guidance today, as has been always in compliance with the CDC, is two doses, if you've had two of either Moderna or Pfizer, you are considered vaccinated. They are not categorizing boosted as anything other than being boosted. So, so the public should know that when numbers are reported and when they're looking at comparisons between who has received or who's gotten COVID, who's been boosted and who's been vaccinated, those numbers are significantly different. So when you're looking at infective rates for those who are vaccinated versus infection rates for those who are vaccinated plus being boosted, recognize that those are two completely different categories. So here locally, how are we doing? I've been stressing over the last several months that Port Wayne Eme is a little bit behind the ball on the rest of the county as far as our total vaccination numbers. If you see at the very bottom of your screen, we're at about sixty-one percent of our fully vaccinated of our eligible population, which is trending below kind of where we want it to be. I've talked in length on a couple of presentations about some reach-out programs that are underway with the Department of Public Health and trying to get those folks who may not have access or as much ability to get the vaccine. And their programs are underway. But it's really important to continue to have the conversations with those folks in the community who still may question whether or not they should get it, if they shouldn't get it, and to really make sure that the information that they're getting is factual and correct. So we want to continue to stress with our population here that the vaccine is safe, it is available, and all they need to do is reach out to, to get it. So we want to push our folks to know that the ability to get a vaccine is here, and we encourage them to do so. Okay, masks, right? We've, we talked about it every single presentation. With this one, I'm going to have abbreviated conversation with you about it. I can simply put it, we're nowhere near close to meeting two of the three of these. Clearly, we need a seven per 100,000 case rate, and we're at over 100. I don't think any comment is needed there. The second term hospitalizations in the county are low and stable. We're at 40. The last time this came out, we were at five. So I don't think we meet there either. But what we do have is number three, and that is we are at the 80% mark as of this evening at 5:00 PM. So number three has been met, but we are not meeting the other two. So I won't go into where we are with that because it was on the previous slide. As always, let's talk about unemployment rates. Read a report this morning, we're at 4.2 today. That is 4.4 from our last meeting, so we're still hovering in the 4% range. And you can see on this map, this is kind of a heat map of our coastal communities. And we seem to be trending right in line with how they are doing. So. So that is of good news. And finally, I have two slides on kind of some final thoughts here. Really interesting over on the right-hand side of your screen where these peaks are. When I last presented, we were we were about here, around this 254 mark. What you're seeing represented today is is right here. This is significant, and this is significant. This is that downward trend that we're that we're seeing that we want to continue to draw all the way down here. If you look over here under unvaccinated and vaccinated, this is what this chart is doing, is comparing per 100,000 cases. How many did you have over a given time? And today, we're at 291 per 100,000 for unvaccinated and 118 per 100,000 for vaccinated. What does that basically say? That means that unvaccinated has half the case rates that vaccine vaccinated, unvaccinated folks do. And we need to continue to get this line to drop, and we need to get this line to drop. In layman's terms, I kind of thought of this scenario that it may resonate with you. For those of you who are at the age where cholesterol is important, think of it as your average cholesterol, give or take, should be about 200. Saying our numbers are coming down is like saying you have a cholesterol of 800, and now you have a cholesterol of 700. We are nowhere near what our target should be of that 200, but it's favorable that we are downtrending, and that's what we want to continue. So we really need to push to continue all of those protocols to help reduce the transmission and spread, which we know are clearly vaccinations. We know that's masks, we know that it's good hygiene, and we know that it's keeping our distance from one another and social distancing when possible. So continue on with all of those good things, and we can see these trend lines really start coming down as they are currently. And finally, on my last slide, as always, we want people to get boosted. If you have not signed up to get a free rapid test, you can go to @covidtest.gov, and that is a great site. I signed up for them on our last presentation two and a half weeks ago, and I already have the test kits in my mailbox. They come from the United States Postal Service, and you will get a notification when you sign up that they are delivered. And sure enough, within two weeks' time, they were in my mailbox. So we would encourage everyone to go get signed up, and you can get those tests delivered right to your home. Again, local guidance and national guidance suggests when you wear a mask, please make it a surgical math or KN95 or N95 mask. And a little preview into the next presentation, there is a lot of talk in the community right now since the spread has been so significant that a lot of folks are questioning, well, if I already have COVID and I'm not vaccinated, why why should I even consider it? Or if I am vaccinated, but I haven't got boosted yet, does my natural immunity cover me, and what are the pros and cons of doing that? There is some really significant research coming out on that. In about three weeks, I'm hoping to have a full report from you, both from the CDC, and there's three universities that I've kind of been following that are putting out some really interesting information about this. So I just wanted to kind of give you a little foreshadowing on what's to come and invite any of the members of the public to come listen to that. That should be a really interesting conversation. So we'll be talking a little bit about that, and of course, going over the numbers as we usually do in every presentation. And I'm looking for this one to be for our March update. And with that, I will take any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Madelon. Councilperson Perez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Madelon, for the presentation. I do want to make mention because it wasn't mentioned in your presentation that the governor announced indoor mask mandate for vaccinated ends on the 15th. But I did want to find out where the numbers come from, from the unemployment rate, and how does that compare with pre-COVID? Because I don't know if you have noticed, but I have noticed an increase, just about every business has a help-wanted sign. And I know several businesses that used to be open, full hours, are now having to shut down early or take off certain days of the week because they don't have employees and can't find employees.
Sure, so there's a link that's supplied by several sites. One of them is reported through the Ventura County Star that points to the California database for for businesses to report their workforce. And there's a report that's published quarterly, and then there's one that comes out with a foreshadowing monthly. And I pulled those numbers from the one that was published on Friday on a monthly forecast for for February at 4.2. And then at last month, the quarterly update came out at 4.4.
Okay. I just had just a couple of comments. I'm concerned about our low vaccination rate in Port Wainimi. Is there any kind of a sense as to why that's the case? Is it because of lack of availability? Is it because of lack of education? Or is it because of some personal thoughts on a personal decision?
My personal feeling, I think it's probably the last two that you said. Availability is all over the place. I mean, we've conducted here in Port Wainimi multiple events that had free vaccines, one of them being the Beach Festival. Another one was with Mayor Protem Martinez at the park, along with several other pop-ups at the port. What I think is kind of occurring in our particular community as well is is there are always going to be those who just aren't going to get vaccinated no matter what anybody says. And I think we have a strong group of those folks. And I also think that the opportunity exists for those who are really who have had COVID, who say, well, you know, I've had it now, and I made it through. And what's the point of getting vaccinated if if I already have immunity, which is where my next presentation kind of I got the idea from? So I think it's an educational thing. I think I think it's just a matter of trying to encourage the community to get it. And then it's also a realization that as we push and as we get free programs into the community, there's always going to be those who just aren't going to.
Well, thank you for the realistic report as to where we're at right now. Without any other questions, we will now move on to the consent agenda. I'm going to be reading the titles of the consent calendar prior to a motion to approve. The first is number three, approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of December 20th, 2021, the special meeting of January 13th, 2022, and the regular meeting of January 18th, 2022. There's a recommendation to approve the special and regular minute meeting, regular and special and regular meeting minutes. It's a tongue twister. Number four, receive and file the financial cash disbursements from January 12th, 2022 through February 1st, 2022. Again, the recommendation is to receive and file these disbursements. Number five, the treasurer's quarterly investment report, December 31st, 2021. Again, the recommendation is to receive and file the treasurer report as presented. May I have may I have a motion and a second to approve our consent calendar?
I'll move second.
Madam Clerk, will you please take roll call vote?
Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we are now moving on to our public hearings. The first one is a special use permit, number 30-21, for the Darvita cannabis events. It's going to be a continued public hearing that originally started on January 18th, 2022. The hearing is now opened at 7:30 PM. Do I have any members of the council who have any conflicts to disclose? Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication as required by law? Do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Sure, we do.
Will staff please present the report? We're going to be having Mr. Stewart, our Community Development Director, presenting the report.
Great, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff and Audience. This is, as you mentioned, a continued public hearing from January 18th for the Darvita Cannabis Cultural and Sales Event. You have the next slide, please. At this point, the applicant, as you may recall, is asking to hold a series of cannabis sales and submission events in the beach parking lots, B and C, and along Ocean View Drive. At this time, the first event has been moved back to April 30th and May 1st, and this is to allow the applicant to get his application into the state with within their 60-day requirement. The second would still be at June 18th and 19th, 3rd, September 10th and 11th, and the 4th, December 3rd and 4th. At all events on the Saturdays, the general public would be admitted from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM with closing or the last call basically at 8:30. Sundays would be open from 12:00 noon to 7:00 PM. Again, last call is 6:30. Vendors would set up and take down before and after the event. Next slide, please. As mentioned previously, the applicant is expecting approximately 2,000 to 4,000 attendees per day throughout the day. No one under 21 would be allowed. There would be cannabis and non-cannabis vendors plus food vendors at the event. On-site consumption could only occur within the lounges, which will be fully ventilated, odor-free and secure. And a DJ would be set up in Lot B. Next slide, please. The applicant will be providing his own security. We'll have guards at the entrance to the event, at the lounges and throughout the event area. Attendees would be checked in by the guards at the entrance to the event. No outside cannabis or alcohol would be allowed, act no outside liquids at all would be allowed. The event would comply with all COVID restrictions in place at the time. The applicant will be using the metric point of sales system to track all sales, and this is a statewide system. And 5% of the gross revenues generated by the event will be given to the city's general fund, similar to our dispensaries, and 1% would be donated towards local charities. And I'll discuss that a little bit further. And so with regard to the the reason why this item was continued by the city council on January 18th, there were three issues that were raised. One had to do with parking, especially ensuring that the attendees paid for it. Two had to do with revenues generated by the December Darvita event. And third would be noise generated by the GJ booth. Next slide, please. With regard to parking, the applicant, well, first of all, most of the parking will occur in Lot A, also along Surfside Drive and possibly within Lot E. The applicant is proposing to station a minimum of three attendants within parking lot A. One would be at the entrance to collect $8 from each entering vehicle. And this would be no matter how long they stayed, whether it be an hour, which is normally $2, or for the whole day, which is our $8 fee. One attendant will be located within the lot to help attendees find parking spaces. And the one attendant would be at the exit to count the number of available spaces to allow additional vehicles to come in that are available spaces. The attendees or tendents, excuse me, will also remind those turned away that the streets in Lot E are also paid parking areas. We do have conditions of approval with regard to this. Next slide, please. Now, with regard to revenues generated by the applicant's previous event, which was, as you recall, smaller in scale. Police staff time, parking spaces within Lot C used for the entirety of the event in the public hearing noticing resulted in a basically a bill of $4,396.13, which has been paid. As I mentioned, the cannabis vendors were also required to pay 5% of the gross revenues, less sales taxes paid. And this resulted in the generation of approximately $4,000 in revenues for the general fund, all of which again have been paid. I do want to point out that conditions 4 and 32 of that resolution for that SUP allow the applicant up to 60 days to make these required payments to the city, which ended on February 1st, he essentially paid them. The reason why they weren't made previously was because we were waiting for one final invoice, and that had to do with the publications to send to the applicant. Once he received them, he paid them. So I also wanted to clarify that for the public comment that we received at the beginning of the meeting. Next slide, please. With regard to noise, the DJ booth will be located in Lot B. It was in Lot C last time, so it will be further away from residences. There will be smaller speakers located throughout the event area instead of a single large speaker. So this allows the noise to be transmitted at lower and more localized levels. And we also require through a condition that the sound adjustments be made at the we do receive complaints with regard to noise from nearby residents. Next slide, please. So as you saw at the last hearing, this is a site plan. Basically, the little ovals located particularly along Ocean View Drive are food trucks and food vendors. All of the vendors along Ocean View Drive would be a non-cannabis-related. The cannabis tents will be focused in the middle of Lot B and along the southern portion of Lot B, and then along the outside, eastern and southern edges of parking lot C, with the vendors, restrooms, et cetera, scattered throughout the rest of the event area. Next slide, please. And just general information, SUPs, as you well know, are required for events of this scope at Wainimi Beach Park. And the project is considered exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act as it's a minor temporary use of the land. Next slide, please. As I mentioned previously, again, there will be a minimum of 5% of the sales from the cannabis businesses' sales that will go towards the general fund. We estimate that with the use of all of the paid parking lots, A, B, C and E, that will generate approximately $11,800 in that revenue in revenues alone from that use. The applicant will also again need to pay for all costs incurred by city staff and resources. And next slide. So at this point, it is recommended that the city council adopt the resolution that conditionally approves SUP number 30-21. And I'm available for any questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. I'm sure we're going to have some good questions tonight, starting off with Councilperson Gama.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. So last time, I understand this is a continuation of the first public hearing, and so we're supposed to treat all this information as evidence, I believe. And if I'm incorrect, please correct me. So last time, in the staff report, it said the applicant was required to get everyone to pay for parking. I don't remember the exact word. So and I'm still not understanding what it's meant in the report that the applicant's going to collect parking fees from individuals. So to me, that is not resolved. Secondly, are we going to get revenue for all the parking spaces in Lot B? In other words, if there's 200 spaces, will we get $8 per space? And because we're taking those parking spaces out of service? And it's my understanding that the state system for cannabis sales is generated automatic, connected to the POS. So my question is, is why haven't we got a firm number as to the success or non-success of the prior event? I don't see a spreadsheet that says go down the items, and so I'm a little concerned about that. And I'm also concerned that this event is open to 21-year-old and older. And I myself personally don't like it because it's it's cutting off family engagement at Wainimi Beach for the day. And, you know, having people come to buy and smoke marijuana doesn't seem to be family-engaged, and it just discourages. Well, if someone is there with their family, oh, look what's going on. Well, they're not going to be able to go in with their kids. So I just don't, I don't feel like, I don't feel like all the questions have been answered. And I don't feel like we've been given a quality report on to the success of the last event. So could you clarify the parking for me, please?
Sure, I can clarify everything except for the last point. With regard to your first question about how they will be collecting the $8, anybody coming into Lot A will be required to pay $8, so have a parking attendant there the entire event. And then we will have parking enforcement available as well, who will be monitoring the rest of the parking lots, Lot E, as well as Surfside Drive. Second question you had was with regard to how will they pay for parking lot B? Parking lot B will be fully paid for, for the entire event. That will be Friday during the setup time. All day Saturday, all day Sunday, part of Monday as well. That will also be for parking lot C and Ocean View Drive as well. With regard to the revenues generated, we actually have those receipts. However, we don't, the receipts are basically kept internally with finance and myself, because we don't want to basically jeopardize the privacy of the businesses, so we do this with all of our monthly payments. But we do have specific receipts for each and every one of the vendors who paid at this event. And so I rounded to approximately $4,000, because that's what it is with change amongst the, the seven vendors that were generating revenue at the event.
So how do you justify not allowing anyone that's less than 21, 21 and? Or why is that good for our city to have an event that is only good for 21-year-olds and above?
Yeah, you know, that's, that's somebody's opinion. I can't really justify that one way or another, other than to say that, again, the event will have parking lots B and C and Ocean View closed off, but parking lot A and all of the beach access from basically westward to parking lot B, all the way down to Market Street will still be open.
So is the Darvita security person who is going to be there collecting $8, what, what's he going to give the person that gives them $8 to park?
He's going to give him a parking pass.
A pre-printed parking pass or one that comes out of the machine or?
We'll coordinate that when we get closer to the event. I'll work with our parking manager on that.
Well, again, I thought that's what we're going to be briefed on here tonight, because the report last meeting said that all participants were required to pay for parking, and we didn't see that, and so I thought we were going to have all those questions answered tonight, so I'll just.
Okay, Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, and thank you, Mr. Stewart, for the updated report. I feel that you have satisfied the council's concerns with respect to the, the revenue. Thank you very much for explaining the, the timeframe that we expect those revenues to be turned in. I'm glad there's provisions for that. I also appreciate the solutions that you provided for the parking and for the noise. I, I think you addressed those adequately for me. And I don't really have any ques, any further, any questions at all. I'm, I'm satisfied that this has been addressed. I'm a little concerned about the security of the, the Mr. Perez's parking attendants holding cash. I hope there's, that can be worked out. I trust that you will figure out a, a safe and secure way for those parking attendants to, to, to take cash and being sure that we, we get it all turned in appropriately. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Done noted. Thank you.
Councilperson Perez.
I think Mayor Protem Martinez was before me.
Mayor Protem Martinez.
Thank you, Misty. Mayor, I, I, I got cut off, and I wasn't able to hear when they actually said how much money was made in the last event. So I lost the video stream.
I, I mean, if I'm just, I, I, it was $4,000 in revenue from the cannabis sales and another 11,000 for parking fees. I think 15,000 total. Tell me if I'm incorrect.
Just slightly. The 11, 8 is what we're expecting to be generated with parking this time around. Last time, it was approximately 4,900 for the parking and the staff time, and then the 4,000, you're correct, with regard to the cannabis sales. So it's approximately 8,900 total.
Who made $9,000 off of the event. Mr. Mayor Protem Martinez, continue.
I, I think I'm good for now, because I, I just wanted to get that answered first, because I wasn't able to hear. So, thank you.
Mayor, I, I mean, Councilperson Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I, I believe the two main concerns that I had last work addressed, the money revenue from the last event. And it does, did you say that the contract says they have 60 days to pay? Is that what the contract says?
Correct. The conditions of approval do allow for up to 60 days.
Okay, so it pretty much was on point, is, is consistent with the contract.
That's correct.
Okay, and the other one was the parking issue. I don't, I don't really have an issue with 21 and under not being allowed, because sometimes we're going to have events that cater to adults, and I don't see that that's necessarily a problem. I think all issues have been satisfied that I had an issue with last time, so thank you.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, we're not talking about disallowing people under 21 into the parking lot. We're talking about disallowing people under 21 to the event, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We, we cannot, per Coastal Commission regulations, we can't prevent folks from accessing our beach.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can I address some of the comments?
Yes, yes, Mr. Perez.
Thank you, sir. The parking lots, all three of the parking lots will be paid for in advance, except parking lot A. And Mr. Stewart went over how we, we collect the money for parking lot A. Also, too, to answer Councilwoman Hernandez, the, what we intend to do with the parking attendants, checking the, accepting the cash, maybe about every 30 minutes or every hour, we'll have someone go take the, the cash from him and then put it in a more secure location, so they will not have that, that cash, a, a large amount of money on them. Also, too, the, the the, the taxes that were collected, keep in mind, I only had three weeks to promote this event, the, the last event. I only had six cannabis vendors. My intention this next event, I, I'm hoping greatly three times this amount, if, if not more. And then also, too, I'll be, keep in mind, too, I only had one parking lot, the smallest parking lot. Thank you.
I had a few questions and some concerns. Of the people, of the vendors that you have, we have 14 companies, I think approximately, within the city of Port Waenimi. How many of those 14 participated in your event, or, or, or do you plan to have in the upcoming events?
In the last event, we had six cannabis vendors, four from the, from the city of Port Waenimi, and two were outside. One was from Santa Barbara, and another one was from Adesto. And of course, I, I also agreed with Mr. Stewart and Chief Salinas, and I do intend to do that. This next event, I always, like last event, I approached the, the Port Waenimi dispensaries first. They all had first choice. And I went to visit several of them more than one time to give them the opportunity, and I get in this one also, too. If need be, I could also send out an email to each, each of those and, and CC Mr. Stewart and Chief Salinas to show that I am asking them prior to going out to, to any of the dispensaries. Again, my inten, intention is to keep it within the city, within the community.
What? And, and you, this is kind of more philosophical. We have 14 companies within the city selling everyday cannabis. What, what is the attraction towards doing an event at the beach as opposed to the general public just going to those 14 outfits already?
It's very similar to a beer festival or a wine festival, where you can actually sample different, different types of wines or different types of beers. The same thing with cannabis, is that you can try the different types of cannabis actually right there on site.
Okay.
That's what the attraction, because at the retail stores, you cannot consume on site.
Okay. This, this question is to Mr. Stewart. I know that we've been in a kind of a state of flex as far as getting our staff up to 100% capacity. Will, will these events, will you be able to have a parking lot attendant being able to verify people parking and paying their fees?
Yes, right now, we are just about ready to bring onboard a second parking enforcement officer. In fact, once they're trained, we're planning on then opening a recruitment for a part-time parking enforcement officer, so we'll eventually have all, you know, two and a half. But even with this first event, we anticipate having a parking enforcement available for this event. The idea is that this new person coming onboard will be full-time, will be working weekends as part of their regular schedule. And so they will be available to basically patrol the event area.
I know that we are charging for police support on this event. Are we also charging for the parking lot attendant to be there?
Well, again, the, the parking lot attendant who's collecting the money will be an employee of Mr. Perez's. Our parking enforcement will be out doing additional patrolling of the street and parking lot E to make sure that those spaces are paid for. And like I said, this should be part of their regular normal scope of duties on a weekend day, and so this wouldn't result in any kind of overtime or any duties outside of their normal requirements for this type of event. So we won't have to incur any additional costs.
I guess where I'm, like, when we, we charge for police, are we bringing in additional police? Are, are we using existing police at their existing, you know, their existing work day? How is that different from the parking lot attendant? In other words, I mean, are we hiring, we're not hiring additional parking lot attendants, so I'm sensing you're saying we're not going to charge for our city staff, because they're already on duty. Is that not the same with the police, or are we hiring additional police to monitor this event?
I don't think Chief Salinas is online.
I'm here, Tony.
Oh, great. Then the chief, I'll let you answer.
Just like the previous event, Mr. Perez paid for two additional police officers to be at the event on both days. And so we plan on doing that for this event, but based on the size of this event, we may require two full-time officers on location on both days, to which Mr. Perez did pay in full for the services provided by the police officers during his last event.
Yeah, just a comment, I know since parking was, you know, an issue last time when we had the public hearing, it would seem a good thing, especially since we, it was to pay for a, our city parking person is going to have to concentrate their efforts on what seems to be many, many, many people at the beach that day. And it would seem that apropos to be able to, you know, that we should, while I recognize that Mr. Perez is going to have somebody out there collecting the fees, you know, the, I guess the cross-checking would be that we would have our city parking lot attendant paid for to make sure that that in fact happens, just like we hire additional police to make sure that the rules are being followed.
Mr. Mayor, some of the parking lots, we were going to pay for in advance. I believe two or three parking lots will be paid for.
And, you know, part of, part of our city pillars is that we want to increase tourism within the, you know, within our city. I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're having, we're proposing to have four of these per year. I can see maybe having one, perhaps two. We haven't actually seen the effects of the second one, because the first one was kind of a pilot, and as mentioned, it was quite a bit smaller. And I went to it both days, and it was well-managed, and it was you know, everybody seemed to be, except for the parking situation, everybody seemed to be following the rules and being good tourists. However, this one is going to be quite more expansive. It's going to take over that whole road, and it's going to from, well, from the revenue projections, we're going to have quite a few, quite a, quite a bit more people. And I'm, I'm a little concerned about approving four of these per year. I would like, I, in my particular thought, I would like to see how this second expanded one goes, and that everything, all the things are happening, and then even then, I'm a little bit concerned about us having them four times a year, and what's the impetus that we're making this an, an event that we need to have it four times a year at the beach? Councilman Perez.
And Councilmember Gama was before me.
Okay, I'm sorry, Council, I, Councilman Gama, you got that kind of faded orange hand. I can't see it too well, so I'm sorry, Councilman Gama.
So I'm I'm not in agreement that the parking thing is resolved, and this, this proposal, keep in mind, this is going to be as big as the Waenimi Beach Festival. So they're proposing to take over parking lot C, parking lot B, and Ocean View Drive, so that's huge. That's much bigger than what they first did initially. So when, when it said that they'll have a guy at parking lot A, well, parking lot A is going to fill up very quickly if, with the size of the event you're going to have. So then you're going to have people scrambling to park down Surfside and parking lot E. So you're going to have to have a different plan for Surfside Drive. I mean, and is the same person going to go over to parking lot E as, as doing parking lot A? And so I don't, I don't feel that it's been resolved. In my mind, it would have been resolved if you would sell tickets, and part of your ticket price would be a, a parking pass. And that would solve it once and for all, but apparently, I don't know if you heard that last time around, but I think I did make that recommendation. And I just, I'm sorry, folks, but our beach is for everybody. It's just not for 21 and older people that want to smoke weed. And so I really fear that turning our beach into a pot-smoking event, I just don't think it's good for our brand. And I, I do agree that it was managed well, it was contained in parking lot C, but, you know, now we're going to take as much real estate up as the Waenimi Beach Festival for pot-smoking. And I, I don't like it when we're referred to Pot Waenimi. I don't like it at all. I think our beach has a lot more to offer the general public. And it just concerns me that a family may be coming down to enjoy the beach, and then they're going to run into a closed parking lot C, closed parking lot B, parking issues all up and down the street, and all they want to do is bring their kids to Waenimi Beach, so. Those are my comments, and I'll just leave it at that.
Councilperson Perez.
Yes, so I would just like to have some comments. This is four weekends out of This is four weekends out of a twelve-month timeframe where there's about four to five weekends in each month. Which there's plenty of time to have other events. If anybody wants to plan any events, I hope to have lots of other events. Some of those, um, will possibly be twenty and older, as in wine festivals. That's another discussion I won't get into, but I don't see anything wrong with having a marijuana event. Because this is the type of event we have generated with being the green mile and having dispensaries. And that's what the majority, a lot of people in our community do. That's what people come to our city to get. So we created this when we allowed all the dispensaries to come in. So to say it's not our brand, it may not necessarily be the one that you wanted, but it's the one that's happened because we've opened up the door to marijuana. So why not capitalize on it? And having four events in a year really isn't that significant. And a family can still come and enjoy the beach. They're not being, um, pushed out of the beach area. They're being pushed away from a parking lot where they can still enjoy a full beach. So I'm, I'm not really seeing any more issues. I think we should put it to a vote and move on.
Uh, wait, I have, I have one question, I have one raised hand by, uh, Mr. Vasquez. Um, uh, city clerk, is that a member from the public that wants to make a, a comment at this time?
Sure, it does appear that way and we should allow for, for any members of the public who are in attendance to have an opportunity to provide their comments at this time.
It would just be the appropriate time to do it. I know we have one other comment from, um, uh, Mayor Pro- well, let, let, let me handle that one first. Mayor Protem Martinez, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Well, one of the things I was going to ask, I was like, are there any public comments, um, regarding, um, this, um, permit?
Well, that's a good question and we're going to have.
And then I did want to add something to it, but that was my, my first question.
Okay, so, uh, can we have Mr. Vasquez and any other public comments at this time?
Mayor Rollins, can I make a quick comment before we move on to that? Sure. Uh, just wanted to, and I would love staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I believe the twenty-one and older Flower Fest that we had, the first one. I think that was the first time ever we had an event that was, um, twenty-one and older at the beach. Um, so I'm pretty sure that that's accurate, but if staff could verify that, that'd be great. So we haven't done these events before. Events that we've had at the beach have always been family-friendly, so.
Okay, yeah, point taken. Um, so, Mr. Vasquez, I, I see your, and any other public comments that we have at this point for our public hearing? Can you address those? Um, Madam Clerk.
Uh, anybody wanting to provide public comments, now is the time. You'll have three minutes and if you could just state your name for the record. And I, I don't have a first name, but Key Vasquez, um, you are able to speak. You appear unmuted and now's your time.
Hello, everybody, this is actually Patsy Vasquez, sorry to disappoint. Um, I am a local resident of Oxnard. I am a small business owner and I actually participated in putting on this event. Um, I'm a little disappointed that, um, Mr. Gama has, um, just a long list of negative things to say at the event. Um, I did hear him give a speech in, in one of the tents, just addressing how well-organized, what a great outcome and how we would have his, you know, his support in future events. So I am unfortunate that, that we are hearing, um, such negative comments, but they are, they are legitimate concerns. Um, what I want to address, which already was mentioned, is just, there's just four events in the entire year. Um, plenty of opportunities for other family events to happen. And like mentioned, we're not keeping anybody from the beach. Um, this event, to kind of address Gamma's point. We don't want it to be labeled as a pot-smoking event. That is not at all the purpose, but that is a misconception. And that's what we want to turn around. There's a lot of education, um, the way cannabis is used, the revenue that it brings to the city. And with the correct opportunity and time and planning, we would actually like to educate the public at events like this. We didn't have enough time to put together an actual agenda to try to educate, um, the community and, and do a more wholesome approach. Because we only had three weeks, but with that opportunity, there's just so much, so much opportunity for us to make this event and be the first of its kind in our community. Um, so I think we're just asking for another opportunity. It was the first time, it was not perfect, but what event is? Um, and I think, thank you for everybody else that has listened and, um, with an open mind. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Um, uh, Mr., um, Mayor Protem Martinez, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Uh, I, I wanted to say that I do agree with City Councilmember Gama that the beach is for everyone. But that includes people that are twenty-one and that do enjoy cannabis, you know? Um, that being said, I, I'm, uh, making an motion to approve this, this special use permit.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, uh, these four events, correct? And a second by, uh, Mr. Perez. Um, I would like to make, um,
Mayor Rollins, can we just ensure that there's no other public comments to be provided? Just to give everybody else, uh, one last opportunity, just to make sure we didn't miss anybody.
Well, well taken. Are there any other public comments at this point in time?
I think Councilmember Hernandez.
I see, I see some names here, but I'm not sure if they're here to make a public comment.
Right, the only other hand I see is, uh, Councilmember Hernandez at this point. So thank you, I just wanted to make sure the public had one final opportunity.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second to approve, um, the four events. Um, I would like to make an amendment to that motion. Or I, I, and help me out if it, it's an amendment, uh, help me out, um, Mr. Spalding, if it's an amendment or a separate, um, a, 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 a separate one. And that is, I would like to move that we approve one of these ones, the next one to, um, and not the other ones or, or to, uh, uh, to, uh, deal with those other ones at a later time. And, uh, so that's my amendment.
And you're correct, Mayor Rollins, that is an amended motion.
Okay, so, uh, we have an amendment and a, uh, we have a, we have a main motion and an amended motion. Uh, we have some final discussion on that before we take a vote.
Mayor, Mayor Rollins, if I may interject, the, your amendment needs a second to be debated.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay. So I have, uh, my amended motion is that we approve one of these to see how it goes, since it's a greatly enlarged one. Um, so that's my motion. Okay, so there's a second to that. So now let's have some conver- uh, some, um, we, I can have some further discussion. Um, Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. I just wanted to, um, refresh the council's memory of the last, at the, uh, initial, uh, open, uh, public hearing that we had on this issue. And I raised my concerns about, um, the four events, uh, taking place during, um, you know, good weather times. Uh, where other people want to frequent the beach. Um, I expressed it as a, has a concern. Um, I didn't get much support on it at all. Um, and we did not send, um, the applicant back to address that or to come back to us with another schedule. So to now raise this issue after we asked him to come back for the parking and the, um, and the noise and to address the revenue issue, now we're adding something else, another request for him to, um, cut back on the number of events he has, which I think is, is shoddy. I think it's unfair to the applicant. Um, and, uh, you know, I can't, I can't support this amendment. I, I think it's just really unfair. Despite the feelings I have about having four events, we had that opportunity at the last meeting. We, we didn't address it, it was not supported.
Okay, um, I will, um,
if I may, I,
Okay.
I hate to disagree with Councilmember Hernandez, but, um, it was, you're, you're correct, you did bring it up. And I believe Mayor Rollins suggested that we can talk about the scope, whether it's four, three, two, or, or one additional event. And I think that's why we came back till today. Um, that, that's my recollection, but, um, I think.
But that's not the direction we gave the applicant. And that's, that's, it's a poor business approach, I think, on our part to do that.
I, 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 okay, I, I just want to make a comment, um, based on, um, your comment, Councilman Hernandez. Uh, at the last meeting, there were a variety of things that were, uh, that were unknown. Um, revenue, whether we received the revenue, we talked a little bit about the, um, uh, the sound which has been addressed. Um, and we never really got to actually making a motion on the last event, really. Uh, so I'm, that's why my amendment stands. I, I, I feel that, uh, this is going to be a quite a bit larger event. Uh, it's untested and I don't feel that the, uh, I thi- I think it's our responsibility to evaluate that event, that greatly enlarged event from the very first one, uh, to see how it goes. Uh, before we make any kind of commitment, which I, which I think would be a bad business practice to commit to these other two and then later pull the plug because we didn't think this second one went as well, so.
Well, I, if I could just respond to that, please?
Sure.
Um, I did, I do recall asking Director Stewart if we were unhappy with the first event. If there was a way that we would, uh, we're not, if there was language in the agreement that would, um, keep us from being obligated to go through with the second, third, or fourth event. Should we feel that the first event did not work out? And I believe he said there was, that we, we could do that. And, uh, Mr. Stewart, can you clarify that, please?
Sure, uh, we do have, uh, actually approximately forty conditions of approval on this, uh, on this special use permit. Um, and many of them address, uh, basically the, the requirements of the, uh, the applicant to perform. Uh, however, um, if it makes the council even more comfortable, we can add a specific condition of approval at the end. Um, that specifically states that if there are any, um, issues that, uh, arise, such as, uh, you know, crime, especially crime or anything else that makes us uncomfortable, um, and we should probably define that. Uh, we can go ahead and add that condition of approval, uh, in this resolution here and that way we have it. Uh, and that way the applicant knows specifically what his, uh, parameters, uh, would be.
Uh, Mayor Rollins and council members, if I may interject, just because this touches on a legal matter. Uh, once a permit is granted by the, by the council, it becomes an entitlement. So upon violation of any of the conditions, uh, as Mr. Stewart pointed out, it would require another council action and public hearing to revoke the permit once granted. Uh, there would be due process rights and it would be a quasi-judicial determination as to amendment or modification or revocation of a, of an SUP, uh, in accordance with our municipal code as well as due process.
And based on Mr. Spalding's, uh, legal view, um, we are going to be approving three, uh, well, the main motion, we are approving three events that are completely different. Well, not completely different, but quite a bit expanded than the initial event, which was a pilot event. And I'll go on record as saying that one went very successfully. Uh, this is going to be a greatly expanded one and that's why I put the amended motion. So unless there's any further discussion, uh, let's, let's do a vote on what the amended motion first. And then we move to the, uh, main motion, is that correct? Or is it?
That is correct, the most, the, the latest motion made is the one that's voted on first.
Okay, so, uh, can we, uh, have a vote, um, Madam Clerk on the amended motion first?
That's fair. Mayor Rollins?
Um, uh, and the, can you state the amended motion for, that I made?
The amended motion was just to approve one event and review the others at a, at a separate time. So you were the main, uh, the person who made the motion and Councilmember Gama made the second motion.
Okay, so I will vote yes on that.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes, with reservations.
Councilmember Hernandez?
No.
Council, uh, Councilmember, uh, Perez?
No.
And Mayor Protem Martinez?
No.
Motion fails for, uh, a two, three vote. We'll go ahead and conduct a roll call vote on the original motion, which was to approve as recommended. And that motion was made by, uh, Mayor Protem Martinez and seconded by Councilmember Perez. So Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
No.
Motion passes on a three-two vote.
Okay. So we will move on now to number seven. And that is the planned development PHPD eight-nine-five. A major modification to PHPD three oh-three, Anacapa View Beach Homes. Regarding site, architectural and landscape improvements. In parentheses, generally located at two-four-one White Cap Court. The hearing is now open and it is eight-seventeen. Do any members of the council have any conflicts to disclose? Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication as required by law? Do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes, there we do.
Will staff please present the report? Uh, Mr. Stewart, you're on call again.
Great, uh, yes, I am, and thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, and good evening and everybody, if you haven't heard me enough. Uh, this is, uh, our second hearing of the evening and this is a request by, uh, Anacapa View Beach Homes, HOA, uh, for, uh, modification to their existing planned development permit. Um, as you may recall, back on June first, I believe it was of twenty-twenty, uh, they had asked for a, uh, another major modification. This is kind of a follow-up to that. Uh, the beach homes, uh, are, were originally approved, uh, back in the seventies per, uh, PHPD three oh-three. And the community is located generally, uh, between Seaview and Market, uh, well, Seaview and South Surfside, uh, to the east of Market Street. And you'll see it there outlined in the red. Next slide, please. So this time around, uh, the HOA is ax- asking for four different, um, changes to their planned development permit. And so the cumulative changes, uh, would definitely qualify it for a major modification. Uh, and that is to allow the homeowners to encroach into the HOA's common area along the, uh, the top of the Seaview Street slope. Uh, to allow a variety of garage door designs to be used for all of the residences. To revise and simplify the, um, rather complicated color schemes that were approved back in twenty-twenty. And to remodel and add a two-hundred-and-eighty square feet to the existing pool building. The next slide, please. Let's go ahead and talk about the slope of first long Seaview Street. Uh, this is located along the northern edge of the, uh, HOA's common area. And it slopes from, down from the top of Sea Spray Way, uh, to Seaview Street, uh, shown in yellow there. And the flat portion along the top is approximately four feet wide. It's currently, um, again, owned by the HOA, but, uh, there are quite a few residences that, uh, but that. Uh, and because they are located basically right at the property line, uh, they don't have any, uh, outdoor area to use. And so the, um, property owners and the HOA have come up with was a request or basically a way uh, by allowing, uh, through a recorded easement to allow these property owners to use. by allowing through a recorded easement to allow these property owners to use this as outdoor area. The next slide, please. And so again, this would only be approximately four feet wide and have to be, the easement would have to be recorded. Some of the areas base, based on where they are in relationship to the, the slope, the top slope, would be able to simply install a flat work or landscaping. Some of the other lots may need to construct a low block retaining wall. Because it is retaining wall, it does require city building permits for the building code. No additional living space, however, or any other types of structures would be allowed, with the exception of those retaining walls within this easement area. Next slide, please. So as you may recall, back in twenty twenty, the, the HOA had asked for quite a few different modifications to the rather boxy architectural style of the units. And what they asked for at the time were different paint schemes, stone veneers, railing designs, and other features to allow the homeowners to modernize and customize their units. And so at this point, the HOA is asking for additional customization tool through the use of garage doors with the three types here would be faux wood, the metal rollups, or glass doors. And all would be allowed to be used with or without the windows that you see in the faux wood and metal rollups there. And they'd be allowed with any type of architectural scheme, whether it be just stucco or with the, the stone veneer and whatnot. Again, to truly allow more customization amongst the, the units out there at the development. Next slide, please. So with regard to this paint schemes, previously, we had all approved four different paint schemes, they were all earth tones, but they were fairly complicated and they had base stucco colors as well as different colors for trim and acid colors and whatnot. And the HOA was finding that when people came in to ask or request to paint their homes, that it was kind of complicated to figure out which color went where. So at this point, they're asking for four different schemes again, with one or two stucco colors and then several trim colors that could be applied on, you know, front doors, trim, moldings and whatnot, to make things a little bit simpler for folks to choose from. So these are two of the schemes, the next slide, please. And these are the other two schemes, and you'll see again that the, that they're all earth tones. And then there's a variety of blues, tans, grays, and whatnot for the trim colors. Again, to allow customization of the units. Next slide, please. Finally, with regard to the pool building. The building, or I've colored up the, the building itself a little bit there. The yellow is the existing covered but open patio area. And the rest of that crosshanded area is the existing building, and then the red is the proposed two hundred and eighty square foot addition. Next slide, please. And so what the applicant's asking to do is to add a new utility room to the east side of the building, and that was what was in red in the last slide, to turn the, to make the two bathrooms, unisex bathrooms and ADA accessible. They will maintain the, the sauna area in the middle of it. And then they would like to enclose the existing open, but covered patio area with sliding doors and/or windows to create a buffer from the winds that come through. However, the, the enclosed area will still be fully within the existing eve area, so there won't be any square foot at, square footage added at that point. And then pretty much the architecture will be maintained with regard to the addition in the enclosed area. Next slide, please. I will read all of this for sequo, but basically, the project is considered exempt because it's basically a minor or negligible expansion of the use beyond that of the existing time that we approved the project back in the nineteen seventies. Next slide, please. And so with regard to fiscal impact, there won't be a direct fiscal impact of the city's general fund. However, with the application of the improvements, there is the potential to increase property values out there and thus potentially increase property tax revenues received by the city. And then it was kind of stretched to find a strategic plan pillar that was consistent with this project. So I went with fiscal and economic excellence and a highlight there that the long term, consider the feasibility, long term value of the beach and other high potential sections of the city. I added the emphasis there, such as our planned development here in the city. And next slide, please. So with that, staff recommends that the city council open the public hearing and take any testimony, close a public hearing, consider the evidence. After considering that evidence, adopt a resolution of the city council granting approval of planned development permit number PHPD eight ninety five, and take such additional related action as may be desirable. And with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions you may have. I didn't have a chance to look through all the attendees, but I believe, and Apollo is, who represents the HOA is here as well this evening. Thank you.
Okay, so the question I was going to ask, are there any public comments regarding this item? And we do have one. Madam Clerk, can you open it up for our public comments, both written and actual?
Sir, I don't have any written public comments for this, but any members of the public wishing to speak, now you have your three minutes, and either unmute or raise your hand, and we can address you. No public comments, sir.
Okay, do any members of the council have any, I'm sorry, any of the members of the council have questions of staff at this point? We have Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, and thank you, Mr. Stewart, for the report. I was trying to get a better view of the location. I'm not, you know, I've not been in that, inside that complex maybe but once or twice. But I don't have a problem with the color schemes, I think the color schemes are quite nice for a beach community. But I am a little concerned about the lack of uniformity in the garage doors and I just, I don't understand the philosophy with the, the proposed changes here in the lack of uniformity among the garage doors and the paint, but I'm mainly concerned about the, the garage doors and how that's going to look. And maybe Ann can address that, the thinking behind that. I, I know it's a customization, but it's, it also might look a little strange to have different garage doors.
I do know, there she is, go ahead.
Hi, Ann.
Hi, there.
Hi.
Regarding, thank you. Regarding the garage doors, for instance, the metal rollups, those have actually been in the community for decades. Or actually trying to make it more legitimate, you know, through the records that they are allowed. The only different one is the wood door, but we do have several stacked stone homes that they actually would really go nicely with, and it's kind of a, a new popular type garage door that would upgrade our community. And we've had several homeowner requests for that type of door, that's why that one was done. And the glass doors as well, several of those are already existing, and those are also something that's, you know, a popular option that many homeowners want to upgrade their homes and increase the value.
Sure, I, I understand that, that's, and also the exterior is already different among the, the different units, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay, that makes sense to me, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, does staff have any further comments?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, so if there are no further discussion.
Mayor Rollins?
Oh, we do have some further discussion, I'm sorry. Councilperson Gama?
Yeah, I have a similar question on the garage door. So in my HOA, for some reason, they allow you to put a roll up metal door without the window on top, or the roll up metal door with the window on top. And I'm trying to understand, isn't the role of HOA and city is to promote conform, conformity? And I was just wondering, because it does kind of irritate me a little bit, it's like, when I, I, I like the windows, I think they look good, and then when I see two side by side units here, one of them has the window garage and one of them doesn't. So I'm wondering, is that normal, or is that something that kind of got by? Because these garage doors, I think, I think the garage doors are beautiful. And I, and the first thing I keyed on was, okay, well, are they all going to have windows? Are they going to be allowed to either have a window or, or not a window? And, and that's where I'm confused on, is I thought the, the whole point is to be, to be uniform.
It really depends on the, on the community and what the HOA asked for. You know, there were approvals given, you know, like I said, this one, you know, nearly fifty years ago. And the HOAs are always able to come in and ask for revisions. Again, it does have to be, something like that would be considered a major modification, so that's why, you know, we bring it to the city council. But it really depends on the community and what the, the HOA wants, and ultimately what the decision makers want. In the case of your development, it, there is a lot of conformity amongst the units. And so the idea of having similar garage doors amongst the units may be preferable. But with regard to Anacapa View Beach Homes, where we've already started going down the path of allowing different types of, you know, materials to be used on the exterior, again, railings, stone veneers, different colors and whatnot. This is just, we've already basically started allowing them to really customize their units to the extent possible. You know, they're all still pretty boxy and whatnot, but in this garage door, this, this number of garage door styles basically would allow us, or allow at least Anacapa View to continue down that customer, customization path that they started within, within the last couple of years. And Ms. Apollo may be able to expand on that, and coming from the city point of view, but from the applicant's point of view, she probably also has something that she can add.
Then one other quick question, are, is that retaining wall, is the HOA going to install a retaining wall all across that easement, or is it going to be up to the individuals? Like, oh, I want to put a retaining wall to get that four extra feet? Or is it going to be one continuous retaining wall?
The request was that it would be basically per lot, so each individual lot would install one if they needed to. And if they don't need to, then, then they're not required to.
I don't see any other council questions at this time. If there are no further discussion, we will close the public hearing, the time being eight thirty three. We have before us a recommendation. I am to read the exact resolution and ordinance and titles. The exact resolution in terms of a resolution of the city council of the city of Port Wayne, Amy granting approval of planned development permit number PHPD eight nine five, in parentheses, Anacapa View Beach Homes Association, major modification to PHPD three oh three. The recommendation is open public hearing, take testimony, and documentary evidence. We have close a public hearing and consider the evidence. After considering the evidence, adopt the resolution of city council of the city of Port Wayne, Amy Beach Homes. Let's see, city of Port Wayne granting approval of planned development number PHPD eight nine five, Anacapa View Beach Homes Homeowners Association. And take such additional related actions that may be desirable. May have, may I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Motion, second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Gama, Councilman Gama, and a second by Councilman Perez. Madam Clerk, can we please take a roll call vote at this time?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're now going to move on to business items, number eight. Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with REACH. Will staff present the report?
Good evening, Mayor Rollins and city council members, for the record, this is Charles Parrot, Deputy City Manager. Item number eight on the agenda pertains to a proposed professional services agreement between the city of Port Wayne and REACH. As you all know, REACH, which stands for Recreation, Education, Arts, and Culture in Wayne, was formed as a nonprofit corporation in two thousand and fifteen. The concept for this organization was born from city efforts to initiate and expand community events and programs. The organization mission, the organization's mission is to financially support and encourage civic events and activities which contribute to a richer quality of life for Port Wayne residents. Recent communications between REACH and city management led the exploration of using REACH to plan, manage, and execute large scale community events. REACH's recent decision to engage consultant services for executive support and the management of the Wayne Beach Festival provide a potential resource to provide such event related services. Large scale events hosted by the city would be aimed at enhancing both community pride and the community's knowledge of and connection to Wayne history and heritage. The events also have the opportunity to raise the profile of the city, attracting tourism, and rebranding Wayne as a destination area. In these ways, the execution of such events are consistent with the strategic plan. The proposed agreement between REACH and the city would require REACH to plan and execute a total of five events between March of this year and June of next year. The proposed agreement has an end date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty three, and involves a total cost of forty eight thousand dollars. That includes twelve thousand in the current fiscal year and thirty six thousand in fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty three. The agreement also provides for tracking and reporting of performance metrics to assess the value of the services provided through the agreement. So ideas explored currently, Wayne at seventy five, the events associated with that celebration of the, of the city's seventy fifth anniversary, as well as the Wayne Beach Days and associated events leading up to the Beach Festival, are two likely candidates for a event planner. Other concepts are more premature in nature, are being explored. They're not finalized, and they would require council review and approval before any decisions were made. Those concepts include such things as a firework show, a community parade, a five K or a ten K race, and things of that nature. The metrics that were mentioned include reporting out on the number of attendees at each event, social media activity, mentioning and promoting the city, and customer surveys where such events would be appropriate for them. Those surveys would include information about tourism, community pride, knowledge of community heritage, and other questions about overall event success. So as additional details are provided in the staff report, the council is asked to consider engaging in a professional services agreement between the city and REACH for the provision of large event services and to allocate funds that are required for this agreement. Available for questions, as is the president of the REACH Foundation, Mr. Steve Kenny.
Okay, Councilperson Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Perez, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Perez, for the presentation. I have, I don't know how usual these contracts are between the city and REACH, but I. but I'm a little confused as to where the money is actually going. Is it going to hire a consultant? And if so, what are the specific duties of that consultant? I saw the scope of work, but I'm wondering who is actually going to carry out the contract? Who's going to do the work in making these five events happen?
So are.
Who are we paying, basically?
Yeah, we're, under this agreement, we would be exchanging a contractual relationship and financial relationship with REACH. It is likely, and it is expected, that REACH would use consultant services to provide the services that are discussed. But the contractual agreement would be between the city and REACH, and the funding would be paid directly to REACH for the required services.
Okay. So the responsibility could go to a board member or it could go, I mean, I don't know that they have staff. I know that they sometimes hire consultant, but.
Right, could I amplify on that?
Yes, please do. Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Good evening, Council. I'm Steve Kenny here tonight in my capacity on the REACH Board of Directors. Yes, our intent, the board's intent, is to hire someone on a contract basis to do essentially two things for REACH itself. One of them would be to satisfy our really longstanding need to have some kind of staff support for the board of directors. Right now, REACH is a seven-member board, period. All volunteer, and that's a real limiting factor in our ability to extend our impact into the community as we would like to do. So the board has agreed for some time that it would be really a strategic step for us to be able to engage someone to act in a staff support capacity for us. So that's one factor. The second factor is since last year when we took on the partnership role with the city to carry out the Wayne Beach Festival, the role of the beach festival manager was embedded in in the entire budget for the festival. And it's one that we essentially manage from a financial point of view. So the second, the second set of duties, I guess, that we would be looking for this contractor to carry out would be to act as the festival manager, just as was done last year. So those are the two things that the REACH Board has already approved. The idea of recruiting and hiring someone on a contract basis to carry out. And the basis for our discussion with the city over the past several weeks has been, it just seems likely that a person who will have the skill set that we're looking for, who can be successful in the roles that we need for REACH, would also be, that would be the same skill set that could be very successful in carrying out the event planning that would be beneficial to the city. So our thought was to try and kind of roll all of those responsibilities up into one position and share the cost with REACH paying roughly two-thirds and the city one-third. And get some efficiencies and get, I think, greater impact for everybody from that relationship.
Okay, and then my other question has to do with the types of events. I think we have a great list here of four, four events, of course, Wayne Beach Days, but new events in preparation of our anniversary and then a community parade and a firework show. Where did these ideas come from? Because I don't recall the city council discussing them. And it could be my memory, I just forgot, but where did these ideas come from?
I'm going to actually defer to the city on that because, as Charles said in the presentation, that it will actually be the city that will determine which events that the funding that they give to REACH will go to support. So since it's city picking the events, I should probably stay out of that discussion.
Okay. Mr. Connors, do you have an answer for me?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. These are examples of types of events that are possible, potential events. They're not, they're not recommendations or anything like that. They're just to illustrate some of the purpose that this particular person would contribute to our, our environment for special events. All of them had been mentioned at some point by a council member or two, and that's why they're included. But they're no, they should not be considered actual events that they will be planning for. These are just examples.
Okay, I guess that wasn't clear in the staff report. And I, looking at the list here, I could certainly see that there would be a need for an experienced events coordinator or event organizer to help launch these events. But, you know, I, one of the, the areas that I would very much like to see REACH address, and that's the area of arts and music. And I, I don't know if that can be incorporated in any way to any of these events. But as you've heard before, we, you know, I, Mayor Rollins and I are promoting a mural project, which could be added to this list because that's going to require some organization. So I don't want to lose sight of other ideas that are out there or other types of projects that are out there. Once you put it in writing, it kind of sets itself in stone a little bit. And unless we're real clear that these are just examples and other projects will be entertained, I would, I would very much like to see that. I would, I'd like to see other, the city council taking an opportunity to discuss other kinds of projects that might be included in this particular contract.
Yeah, there's sort of feedback. If you could turn your mics off, that'd be great. So I, can you say the mission of REACH again, please? Charles?
Yeah, the mission.
Do you have a slide that you can show us?
I don't think I have it stated on the slide, but I can read it to you.
Good.
It is to financially support and encourage civic events and activities which contribute to a richer quality of life for Port Wayne residents.
Thank you. So I'm trying to think historically, I believe the Recreation Department previously was the lead on Wayne Beach Festival. And I do know that we've approved hiring a recreational coordinator that would work underneath Anna and our lifeguard supervisor or together with them as an all. So would it be possible for us to align that department with REACH to provide the clerical support and all the city support necessary? Because it seems like it would be a little bit duplicative. Like I said, I know we approved hiring that recreational coordinator position, hasn't been hired yet. And it's a little unclear as to how exactly this would work. But could we maybe break it up in pieces and like, get REACH to work in close connection with the Recreation Department?
So I think in summary, the answer is yes, we could. But I want to make clear that that discussion is really a departure from Agenda Item Number Eight and what is proposed.
Yeah, and that's what I think we're trying to understand. We're proposing to allocate forty-eight thousand dollars to support REACH. What I'm trying to suggest is, could we allocate support of existing staff, not necessarily dollars?
So we're, we're actually not proposing forty-eight thousand dollars to support REACH. REACH has taken separate actions to identify REACH dollars to fund staff and executive support and support needed to manage the Wayne Beach Festival. What our proposal is, is for forty-eight thousand dollars to receive services from REACH that would pertain to the planning, management, and execution of large-scale events.
So is it your vision that all events, city events, would go through REACH?
That is, that is not the vision, and I apologize if the report doesn't make that clear. There's a focus on five large community and perhaps regional-based events, and that is the focus of this agreement. Other events, such as a small tennis tournament or recreation programming and things of that nature, would be irrespective of this discussion and any agreement for large-scale community events through REACH.
Yeah, my understanding, of course, I wasn't on council back then, is that the, the beach festivals were managed by the Recreation Department. And yeah, so I don't, I don't know how we got away from that, but apparently we did. But I think it's a good idea to get REACH more involved in Recreation, Education, Arts and Culture in Wayne. I think it's just a little unclear how exactly it's going to work.
I just wanted to make one quick comment, Councilman Gama. In the past, when the Recreation Department took the lead, they actually contracted out somebody to run the event, probably at a greater, much greater price than, this is proposed. I, I had read that they had contracted out as much as thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars to run the Wayne Beach Festival in the past. And last year, we actually contracted out somebody to run that. What we're doing now, I think, is bringing this more in-house. So this is a person that's going to be solely, their goal is to provide events for Port Wayne and not maybe just as a sidelight to other things that they do. So.
Mr. Kenny has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Kenny. Mr. Kenny had some comment.
I think it was to offer an answer to a question that has now already been answered. Thank you.
Okay. So without any other questions, can we have, can we, may I have a motion to approve this business item, which is the authorization to enter into a professional service agreement with REACH?
Motion to approve?
Second.
May we have a roll call vote?
Member Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We're going, now moving on to number nine, which is our mid-year financial update for the year two thousand twenty-one, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. We have Mrs. Sero, our interim finance director, to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor Rollins, City Council and staffs. Today, we're providing a update of the first two quarters of the fiscal year. And just to give you a little bit of background, we are, we have implemented a consistent monthly closing process. So we will be closing the books every month, and quarterly updates will be provided to council on a consistent basis. Next slide, please. This next slide summarizes the city and related entity budgets, budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. The fifty-nine point two is, represents the city and related entities. So that's enterprise, special revenue fund, housing, our redevelopment agency. And you can see our budget for the general fund is the twenty-three million, three, 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 sixteen. And that includes the, I'm going to say minor, but we had some budget adjustments in October that were approved by council. Some of those related to salaries and benefits. So that's the updated number for the general fund. Next slide, please. And so, again, these are actual results, they're unaudited, and they represent our revenue and expenditures from July first, beginning of fiscal year through December thirty-first. And just some of the highlights, under the revenue, you'll see that we have a one-time revenue source from the sale of a city property. And there's also some timing differences in revenue recognition and receipts. As far as expenditures, we are right at fifty percent of what we budgeted through the first half of the year. Some departments are a little under, some are over, but we are at fifty percent of budget. And also wanted to note that we're going to be going through, all the departments are going to go through their line items to determine if there are any necessary budget adjustments and finance plans to bring those over to City Council for review and approval by the end of March. So we'll have our budget, budget reprojection with budget adjustments that are going to be proposed to City Council by the end of March. Next slide, please. And so this slide illustrates the general fund budget to actual. So the, the blue on the left-hand side, the twenty-three point eight million is our revenue, budgeted revenue. And then if you look over to the right on expenditures, we had twenty-three point three. So we had just budgeted just lightly an overage of revenues versus expenditures for the year. Or that's actually our budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Actual through December, we're at revenue of ten point one and our expenditures are eleven point six. Mr. Gama, do you have a question?
Well, why don't you finish your report first and then I'll open it up for questions for everybody?
Okay. So in the rev, when you look at overall revenues, we're forty-two point six realized, including that sale of the property. So I just wanted to note that if I pull that out, then we would be at thirty-three percent as far as the revenues go. And again, expenditures are pretty much right in line with the budget through December. Next slide, please. And here is a more detailed view of our revenues. And I made some comments just to help with where we have some timing differences. So property taxes were pretty much in line with our budget at fifty percent of the year lapse. Sales taxes, transactions, we did have some timing difference with some receipts that were pertaining to December that were booked in January, and that's that six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Other taxes are one point two in motor vehicle taxes was received in January. So that's not included in that actual nine twenty-two, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Our licenses and permits are right on. We actually, it looks like we've realized quite a bit, and that's because licenses are renewed right at the beginning of the fiscal year. Panel fines, fines and penalties are right on budget based on, you know, the time of the year. Charges for services, that's due to timing. We also need to, we invoice the Wayne School Cross Guard. So that's, there's a lag there. So again, timing. The use of money in properties, community center rental, that's what's included in that line item. So some of it is timing of rental income and some of it may not be realized due to COVID. Again, we're going to go through in more detail and we'll present that when we do the reprojection or the budget reprojection. The other line is the inner, timing of grant revenues for intergovernmental. Some of those grants haven't. The other line is the inner, timing of grant revenues for intergovernmental, some of those grants haven't come in yet. And then the miscellaneous revenue, that's the line item, and that's why you see a credit. So the adopted budget was roughly two point six million, and the actual is three point six. So that includes the two point two from the sale of the property. And this miscellaneous line item, that's where we booked the cannabis revenue. And so that's in the budget, the property was not budgeted for, it was not in this line item. So that's why you see that variance. And then the next line item is, is pretty in line, because that's our cost allocation and transfers in. Next slide. And so this slide really just, this shows the top revenue sources. So that's property taxes is the second largest, we get thirteen point four, thirteen four seven cents for each dollar. Of property tax comes to the city, and then our sales taxes and measure U tax. So we get two and a half percent in sales and measure U. Transactions and use tax, and that continues to grow with the pools and the online sales. And then our motor vehicle tax, so that's, these are the largest sources of revenue for the city. Next slide. This is a busy slide, but this is the expenditures by department. So summary of expenditures by department. If you look at the bottom, the total general fund expenditures, they just are at fifty percent. There's some departments that are under, some that are over, it's due to, part of it is due to timing. And again, we're going to be looking at it for reprojections going really line by line. Specifically, the O and M, salaries and benefits. If we do have a benefit there, it's, it's because of vacancies, but operating maintenance costs. We're really going to focus on taking a look at if we need to adjust those for the fiscal year. The next slide. And then this is, on this slide, I wanted to just. Give an overview of the general fund balance and the unassigned fund balance. So when we started the year at July first, twenty-twenty-one, our fund balance was seventeen point nine million dollars. And then the financing sources, which is the revenue that we have in the budget, is twenty-three point eight, almost twenty-three point nine. And the uses are twenty-three point three. And then we have fifteen million dollars, fifteen million, three, twenty-five hundred. And these are based on calculations for reserves per council fiscal policies. And we have five different types of reserves. The first one is the economic uncertainty, and the policy is to set aside a minimum of six months. Of general fund expenditures. So that's where that eleven point one million comes in. Catastrophic emergency, that's for disaster, earthquake. And the two point two represents ten percent of the annual operating fund expenditures. And compensated absences is your, compensated absences paid leave when staff leaves, and they have to be paid out. The policy states that we should reserve fifty percent of that. So that's, that's seventy-four thousand dollars. The person medical, that's combined, and in looking at the, the council policy. The policy is to set aside prior, the prior two years of person medical employee costs. And the goal is to reach that minimum over five years. And so what this number represents is the person medical cost for two years divided by five. So it's really a fifth, is what we, what we have in the reserve, is one-fifth. And then the risk management is fifty percent of the annual liability workers' compensation expenses. So that's how the fifteen million dollars was calculated. And if we. Flow that through, the under-reserved fund, fund balance is roughly about three point two million dollars. And again, this is based on the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget. And the, and, and the funding for these fiscal policies based on historical information. So you took prior year's numbers to come up with, with, with the reserves. Next slide, please. And so to summarize, based on the review through mid-year and looking at revenues and expenditures. We're on course with the budget that we set and was adopted and approved for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. We are going to go through, as I've mentioned, just to go through the O and M. And determine if there are any adjustments that need to be presented to council. We plan to bring those to council by, well, the second meeting of, of March, so by March thirty-first. We have also started working on the five-year capital improvement plan, which will be presented to council. With various scenarios for consideration, and the timeline on that is also the end of March. And then some of the things that we've already worked on, accomplished, this, you know, the ARPA projects that were approved by council, they're all set up in the system. We began execution of some of the projects, we have paid all but one grocery, actually a pharmacy. One pharmacy is pending payment, but we paid seventy-five percent of the premium pay for grocery and pharmacy associates. We're working on a fiscal debt management policy, so that's part of our twenty-twenty-two strategic focus. And this will provide us a very comprehensive view of the city's long-term financial and debt picture. So that will include unfunded liability, the trust fund, and just our overall debt management. The water arrears program, wanted to touch on that. We applied and we received funding, we actually just received a check from the California Water Board. In the amount of two hundred, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And these funds are going to be applied to customers' accounts that are in arrears. And according to the guidelines that were provided by the California Water Board. Customers will be getting a credit, we'll send them a letter notifying them how much credit they received. And what their balance is, if they have a balance outstanding. And this is only for water. They're looking at wastewater as well, so we're going to be applying for waste, the wastewater program as well. And then the last bullet point I have here is the audit, we're currently undergoing the audit. So our audit started, and last year, you know, we presented the audit to council pretty late. We are targeting to have the audit financials by the end of the first quarter, I'm, I'm sorry, third quarter, by March. And so we should be presenting those to council sometime in April or early May. And with that. I think that's my next slide is open it up for questions.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Sero, for kind of a nicely laid out status of where we're at. At this time, I'm going to call on the council, Councilman Gama, you have some questions?
Yes, thank you for the report, appreciate it. I have a question regarding positions that are budgeted for but not filled. And basically, I think what the gist of the report is, we're right at, at the. At the six-month mark of the fiscal year, we're right at fifty percent of expensing what we budgeted for. And I was wondering, when we have a position that's budgeted for and it's not occupied, are we? How, how do you deal with that in terms of our mid-year budget review?
For positions that are budgeted and not filled, we, we see a positive variance on those. So we typically, you, we're going to see that benefit in salaries and, and benefits. Sometimes we'll see the offset, and if there's contract work that's being contracted to fill that position temporarily. So most of the time that will offset in total. But there are two separate categories on the, on the income statement, but we'll see the benefit. In salaries and benefits, and then we'll see the offset in the contract.
I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have an idea as to how many positions are budgeted for and not occupied or filled?
I don't have it on me right now, but we are, that's something that we're working on. And we have a, we have a schedule of unfilled positions, so I can.
So I just want to assure myself that, yes, we're doing really good in our budget. But is it because of those budgeted positions that aren't filled? Or have we taken to, taken into account that, hey, there's excess money there because that position's not being filled? Does that make sense?
That makes sense, but like I said, when I see that, I see the offset in the contract work. Most of the time, there's an offset. I did go through the line items in detail, like the O and M, so there are some line items that are, you know, there's variances versus the budget. And that's the reason we're going to be looking at that for mid-year reprojections.
Okay, and then on the revenue side, I didn't see port revenue as one of our revenue streams. I saw everything else, but, and I think that port revenue is approaching like two point six million this year, which is great. I love the fact that when the port does good, we do good, but I didn't see it in your revenue side, is there hiding somewhere?
Yeah, it's, it's in one of the totals, because I, I.
But the, the port revenue is significant, I mean, it's greater than measure U. It's pretty close to what cannabis is doing, so I thought it would have its own section.
I see it on page three of five of the report.
Page three of five?
Use of money and properties.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering why, when we have your pie chart on revenues, there's property tax, measure U. But not port revenues.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, we can, yeah, we usually focus on the top three.
I'm pretty sure it's the top three, though. I mean, from what I know, I think it's approaching two point six anyways, well.
We can, yeah, and we can design, we can take a look at how we present the, it's rolling up into use of money and properties right now. But we can, we can present it differently.
Yeah, because it's a distinct revenue source, but where is it hiding then? Is it in taxes or measure?
It's in the, in the line item, use of money and properties in the three point five million annual budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sero, for your presentation. I have a question on the general fund expenditures, and I'm curious on the police crossing guards. The, we've spent a hundred and six percent of the operating budget, but did we actually use crossing guards in? In twenty-twenty-one? The time period we're talking about? Because schools were closed, right?
Yes.
So how, how did we, how do we spend that money? Did we use it for something else?
No, that should.
Maybe the city manager or somebody else can.
There, we executed a contract, there were, there are crossing guards in, in a part of a portion of twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. So, and then that is split with the school district in the city. So I don't know exactly what the contracting details are, but we did execute that contract.
Yeah, it includes the encumbrance, that's the reason. So the expenditures include encumbrances. So they haven't, yeah, they haven't been spent, but it includes the encumbrance.
Okay, I get that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the water arrears, what was the, what was the, the impetus behind that? Why are we getting reimbursed for that?
The California Water Board received funding, so it's all related to the, the COVID relief. And they were, yeah, so they opened it up for applications, and they had a window of, of, basically from March of twenty-twenty. Through June of twenty-twenty-one. And so we had the opportunity to submit outstanding, all of our outstanding balances for water only. And, and they were, yeah, so they're basically, basically based on submission and the funding that they had available. And we received two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Wow, kudos to you and your department for that, and I think our residents will be happy to hear, they'll be seeing a credit on their water bill, correct?
Right.
That's wonderful news, thank you. It's great, thank you.
I, I should add that there's, there's a wastewater version that we're investigating as well.
Good job. Okay, thank you.
Is that all water rate payers or just the ones that are in arrears?
No, it's just the arrears, this is for arrears only.
Okay, so this is to help the people that got behind in their water payments?
Right.
Okay, so not all of us are going to get a rebate, correct?
Just the ones who needed it, yep.
Okay.
And, and with any other questions I, from our other council? Our Mayor Potem, I have just a few. Okay, the unreserved balance of three point one, what usually will happen with that money? Or what can happen with that money?
Mayor, this city manager, this goes into the scenarios that we want to present in March. You can use that for anything that is not, not currently assigned, which includes capital projects to create a capital budget. It could be debt, it could be other use of those funds. And so the, the March briefing, which would include the five-year CIP, would provide options and scenarios to look at. For not only the unassigned balance in the general fund, but the enterprise funds as well.
Thank you. I just, I noticed that. Maybe I, I misinterpreted, we're perfectly at fifty percent. My experience in budgets is it's usually not perfect at like mid-year, because you spend more or less by this period of time. Is that, is that a warning sign one way or the other, or is that a plus sign?
I, I guess I'll take this question, Mayor. Revenue and expenses are uneven hits, they're not linear, so there's going to be over and under execution throughout the, these budget reviews. But with six months of data, that's a pretty good sign that we are executing our budget with some pretty good discipline.
Okay, yeah, because usually, you know, you can be higher or lower, but perfectly fifty percent, that, that's amazing. I noticed that we have a, was a lack of revenue, without the sale of the property, our revenue is only at thirty-three percent?
We're thirty-three percent realized through December. And some of it is, there were some, there were some revenue amounts that came in in January that related to December. And so those are not included in the December, because they were recorded in January. So some of that is timing, I don't think we would be at fifty percent if all those were recorded, but we're not at, we wouldn't be at thirty-three percent. So we would be somewhere in between.
So fifty percent is the sale, the kind of the one-time sale of the property that's bringing it right?
It, it got us there, right, right. And just to restate that, we're going to be closing every month. So that, having that process in place is really going to help making sure that, you know, everything gets recorded on a monthly basis. And these quarterly reviews will, will have all of our revenues and expenditures recorded up to today.
And to Councilmember Gama's point, the revenue sharing agreements, for, for example, are expected to be much higher than we budgeted for. But they're not realized yet, so they're not reporting at the same levels. And so there's, there's, there's going to be a variety of different new items associated with, with these revenue streams. In the next, in the next report that we give council. I'd also like to say that, and to our finance team, it's turnover this past year. In the past, we were not closing the month of, of revenue and expenditures. for almost six months after the month ended. And we're now at the 15 days after the month. And so that allows us to do a lot better forecasting and predicting and make adjustments since we have the most current data. And it also allows us to provide financial information that is as current as possible to council at our quarterly updates.
Well, kudos to all the staff involved that giving us more efficient, up-to-date reports. I just have one other question. On the crossing guards, we've spent well over the amount designated for crossing guards, and we're not through with the year?
No, we haven't spent it. We encumbered. So most of that, some of that is, is encumbered. But the invoices haven't been paid yet.
Okay, so with that encumbrance, are we going to be, is it predicted that we're going to be on target with that?
It looks like based on the encumbrance, we're going to be slightly over.
Okay. But not a lot?
No.
Okay. All righty, without any other questions, may, may I have a motion and a second to receive and file the mid-year financial report ending June 30th, 2022?
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive. Do I have a second?
Second.
May we take a roll call vote? Madam Clerk?
Member Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, at this point in time, it's for, we have city manager comments and reports.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just got a couple of quick ones. I wanted to make everybody aware, I hope the council is aware, but the public as well, that phase two of our Learn and Swim program is going to kick off here on the 22nd of February. It'll go for four weeks, eight sessions. We'll have four swim levels. And we're enjoying a partnership with Oxnard Union High School District and Port Wainey High School and using their facilities. Obviously a little tight when school is in session, but we've, we've worked all that stuff up. So we're making improvements from the first phase, and we'll continue to make improvements to get this thing, this program a staple in our aquatic programs to include junior lifeguard and our lifeguard programs. Recently, we had 14 community benefit fund sponsorships that went to nonprofit groups. We had them sign agreements and, and to receive their checks. We distributed all those checks. And part of the agreement creates an opportunity for city council and commissioners from the port to participate in events with these nonprofits as they, they come up. And we started programming those. The very first one is going to be on the 17th of February. And that is Real Guppies, who receive not only community benefit fund money, but ARPA money as well. And they're doing a grand opening for their learning center, ripping, cutting ceremony. And I want to make sure that the council is aware, and I'll send out an invite for that. And there's two big days next week. I want to make sure everybody is, is mindful of them. Now, the first one is National Random Act of Kindness Day, and the other one is Valentine's Day, and I wish y'all a happy Valentine.
Do you have any, any comments from our council, Councilman Hernandez?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, thank you, Mr. Connors, for your report. I wanted to ask you about the next port-city meeting. I understand we have a date for that, and just wanted to know what's on the agenda for discussion.
There are, the draft agenda has community benefit fund projects. It also has the YNB Beach Festival as a, as a subject. And then, then other, other, other items for discussion. It was originally scheduled for the 16th, it's being moved to the 15th at 3:30 due to conflict with commissioners.
I just wanted to know, so that Mayor and I can have some time to discuss the, the concept of the mural project before that meeting's held. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
That's a great, that's a great point. The, the agenda is still in draft stage. So if any council members would like me to introduce an agenda item for the port city standing committee in, in their agenda-setting session component of their council meeting, by all means, I'll make sure those things get included.
Great.
Mr. Connors, well, I, I know I'm pretty excited about, you know, the progress regarding the swim program. In future reports, will there be discussion on the progress of the teen program?
Yeah, definitely. There, there's a lot of things formulating right now and a lot of details being worked out. But we want to make sure that we, we start advocating for those opportunities, especially for our at-risk youth and teens. There's some, some pretty interesting programs, and we're going to need participation from our youth to help us determine the best things that they think are important for them and their, and their use of our, our facilities as well as the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, at this point in time, we're going to have council member reports and comments. I'm going to start off with Councilperson Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few updates. The first one is that we have been requested by NAMI Ventura County to be the host city for the NAMI Walk in May. So May 21st is the NAMI Walk, and we are going to be having a kickoff event. And they have selected to utilize the rec center. And they'll be filling out all the applications and submitting them for a special use permit for approval, obviously. But the kickoff event will be March 19th. So that is the first announcement. I'm excited about that. That'll be fun event for, for our beach community. The second one is, I was, I applied for the SCAG Housing Academy Policy Committee Workshop. And I was selected, so I'm hoping to learn some stuff through that that we can use in our city. We'll see. I find that a lot of committees, unfortunately, don't have a lot of stuff that we can utilize ourselves. So I'm hoping that they will give me some guidance and, and I can pick some brains as to what we can do about our own housing issue. And that starts at the end of February. And that's a once-a-month, every Thursday class. It's about three hours long and, and with groups and homework and all kinds of different stuff with it. So I'll keep you guys updated about that. And the third one is I was accepted and approved to the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club. So I'm hoping to be able to utilize whatever events that we hope to get in the community and to use the Boys and Girls Club to get them to be an access point for that.
Thank you. Councilperson Gama?
I have nothing to report out. I just wanted to thank everybody who attended the Alaska Memorial. That was, again, the 22nd Annual was a really nice event. Always enjoy seeing the families. We continue with our beach cleanup. We have really good participation, and I'm really happy to keep doing it. And we will start to plan for California Coastal Cleanup, which will be in September. And wanted to thank staff for fixing the shower. It was a really important safety item that we finally got addressed, and I really appreciate the work. And it looks like it's going to work wonderfully. So thank you to those who corrected that deficiency. It's really good. That's it.
Councilperson Hernandez?
Okay, I just wanted to first say congratulations to Councilmember Perez for her appointments. And I'm also excited to hear about the walk, something we, we need to do more of here in our city, you know? 10K runs, walks, stuff like that. I like that. So congratulations. Committee assignments, I, I have been voted his chair with the Ventura County Ventura Regional Sanitation District. Had my first meeting last week. And I'll continue to report on the goings-on with that organization. Also participated in the RDP 21 general meeting, and I'll let Mayor Rollins report on that. Also the Beacon Meeting, which was a very good meeting. And I think the presentations are available on their website, are they not, Councilman Gama? Yeah, so if you are interested in looking at them, they, they always have excellent presentations and very informative the information about, you know, regional planning regarding our beach erosion and sea level rise. I also attended the Homeless Symposium, which hosted Jessica Bluder, who was, is a journalist. And she's actually the person, the author of the book Nomadland. And I don't know if any of you have seen the movie, but it's really an interesting depiction of what people who were impacted by the housing crisis back in 2007, 2007, how they were impacted and how they're still trying to live today, has nomads moving from open area to open area to, to survive because they have no other means of maintaining a house. So that was very interesting to hear her speak, and some other elected officials were also participating in that, including our Congresswoman Brownlee and Assemblywoman Jackie Irwin. Let's see, what else? Let's see, we talked about the mural submittal and, again, yeah, the Alaska 261 went really well. I was very happy to, to help with the soloist who we got last minute. I don't know if the rest of you knew that we didn't have any music. Oxnard District has a new music director, and he was not aware that we were having this event. Maybe he'll, we can get them more involved next year, but we were able to get the soloist at last minute. And she did wonderfully because she could sing both songs. So it was just, it just really worked out well. And I wanted to thank Chief Salinas and our PIO Scott Madelon for getting out the publication on how to call 911. I've had to call 911 before, and sometimes I'm, I'm asking myself, is this an emergency? Or is this something that I should call the business line for? So I think it's a real helpful document, and I hope the rest of the council will, will share that on their Facebook pages. It's, it's a good informational item to put out there for people. And I also attended the port event welcoming FedEx as our new customer. It was a really well-attended and well-organized event. It was very much, there was much pleasure in attending that, along with our mayor, who gave a nice little speech there, and along with the other elected officials. So I offer my congratulations to the port for their new customer, FedEx. I'd also wanted to ask for adjournment of this meeting in honor of Warren Shelton. And if I could just read a little brief summary about who he was. Warren David Shelton was the president of the ILWU 46. Worked, he was a longshoreman working at the port of Wainimi. He was born April 7th, 1963, and died unexpectedly December 30th, 2021. He worked on the port for 40 years, and he was a proud and dedicated member of the International Longshore and Warehouse Union, where he served as brothers and sisters in labor, has local 46 president and dispatcher for 12 years. He also served on several international union committees where his work allowed him to travel extensively and to meet with local, state, and federal elected officials on labor, trade, and shipping issues. In addition, Warren owned and operated SNS Salt Distributors. He also played an extremely active role in managing Shelton Ranches, the family's small avocado farming operations. He was known as an extremely hard-working man, a devoted husband, father, and friend. He was happiest in the company of family and friends and always made others smile and laugh. He had a big heart, always willing to help others with whatever life presented, from being a supportive confident to assisting with home or automotive repairs. On behalf of the City Council of Port Wainimi, we'd like to extend, I'd like to extend our condolences to his wife, Kim Shelton, the Shelton family, the ILWU 46, and the Oxnard Port District for the loss of this remarkable service to the port of Wainimi. And there was a certificate on the desk in the council office. I hope all of you had an opportunity to sign it. We'll be giving that to the family in his remembrance. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, before I go, you, Mayor Protem Martinez, I see a raise hand by Councilperson Perez.
Oh, I can wait until Bobby. I just forgot something. I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Martinez, I just forgot to.
Go for it, Misty.
Okay, so tomorrow, the very important hearing of the supervisors at 11:00. If anyone wants to come on and make a comment, it's regarding needs assessment for serious mental illness, and it's on their agenda, and some NAMI members will be speaking. If anybody wants to come out and make a comment as to, you know, our needs assessment for Port Wainimi for mental ill, then that would be appreciated. I plan on making a comment myself.
Good. And now, now we have another remembered comment from Councilperson Hernandez.
Yes, and I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry I forgot this one, and that is, I want to thank Christie Buxenkember for her work. I, I want to congratulate you for your move to Camarillo. I know it's a move up for you, and that's a, a move in your professional goals. So I would just want to say thank you for all your support and your work here with the city. You will be dearly missed, but thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Christie. Yes, we will miss you.
Our loss is Camarillo's gain. Mayor Protem Martinez, Bobby?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. I wanted to say that this past Saturday, we hosted a volleyball, excuse me, a basketball event at Miranda Park. And it was pretty cool, and it was really nice. We had about 10 kids show up. And so we played around the world, and we had a little, some little competitions. This Saturday, we're, we're planning to host a volleyball event at the beach. It would be our second one. And the game plan is to coach kids on how to play volleyball from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. And so I'll pro, I'll probably be there for the beach cleanup as well. So it'll allow people to go to the beach cleanup and then go to volleyball. And after that hour of coaching kids, we'll be playing on the courts. And so hopefully we'll have like adults on one side, and then the kids on the other side. And it'll probably last till like around 11:30. The events have been lasting almost three hours. Even though I planned for like two hours, they always end up being a little bit longer. So just want to let you guys know that you guys are free and you guys want to play volleyball. You guys want to get out, 9:00 to like 11:30 this Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going, I, I've been on a lot of, representing you on a lot of committees. So I'm just going to give you some brief snippets of each of the different ones. On the Reach Committee, we donated $200 to the Special Ed Program for Black Stock. For the Ventura County Air Pollution Board meeting, that's going to be tomorrow. One of the things I want to commend staff on is one of the future grants. There's a number of grants that the Ventura County Air Pollution Board can provide cities. And our staff is jumping at the gun right now, and they're been testing out electrical mowers and electrical blowers at our local facilities, which will obviously cut out a lot of pollution. And so I, I saw them the other night over at Miranda Park testing them out. So I commend the staff for their proactive stance on that. RDB, RDP 21, they talked about a lot of things, but one of the more interesting things is the Navy is, over at Point Magoo is getting a grant so that they can prevent water coming in from the ocean to affect our groundwater. They're going to be having, they're going to be developing some kind of a device where when the water comes in, they'll be able to capture that water, actually turn 50% of that into potable water, and then prevent it from contaminating the groundwater in our Oxnard Plains. So that's a good thing. in our Oxn- Oxnard Plains, so that's a good thing. Uh, Gold Coast, we're in the process of hiring um a new um uh general manager, uh interviews will be starting next week. Uh, uh, in SCAG, they had a, a, a joint meeting, but a lot of the discussion was like um and it's apropos to what uh Councilman Perez said, uh, the need for housing and also the need for connecting transportation for under, some of these underserved communities and stuff like that. Um, one of the things that I um uh think is quite interesting, and it was also touched at the Ventura County Transportation Commission, is that for, uh, in Southern California, we're not really using public transportation like in a lot of other cities, uh, we don't have subways, we don't have things like that. So uh, some of the uh members of the Ventura County Transportation Committee tried to use public transportation. And what might normally take us twenty-five minutes by car took three and a half hours by public transportation. So um, I, that's a goal, I think, Ventura County-wide, to make our trend, public transportation truly usable. Uh, I, uh, Council, uh, Councilman, um, uh, Hernandez mentioned that there's gonna be three ships in the next uh uh, three ships from FedEx, uh, because of the over um uh, the overflow of both Long Beach and uh Los Angeles Harbor. There's gonna be three ships that are gonna be coming into our area, which will hopefully uh not only generate revenue, but also get the supply out, source out, so that's a a really good thing. And uh, it's been a co- coordinated effort, not only by the port, but the Navy uh to make the, and FedEx to make this all happen, so it's a really huge thing. And finally, I just, yeah, I, I, I think I, it does our council well that all five of our council was at the Alaska Memorial. Um, and um, I know one of the things that, you know, I um always feel kind of bad about these types of things is all of the people who passed away and what they could have contributed to our uh society if they had uh continued on. And I just want to recognize all the families to keep the torch alive and to keep remembering these people in this type of an event. I, I think it um, it just says testament to all of them, so. Um, with that, we are going to move on to uh future agenda, uh request for future agenda items. Uh, do we have any at this point in time? Okay, uh, I have one, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Councilperson Perez.
Yes, in anticipation of the application uh for the use of the rec center, I would like to put a agenda item up for um consideration of waiving the fees for the use of the rec center for the NAMI uh kickoff and fortieth anniversary event.
Okay, I'll second that. May we have a roll call vote?
Member Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Um, this uh, one thing, it may already be on the agenda, I just was, maybe if there's any kind of a timeline. A while back, we um approved having some kind of a parking report uh on pa- parking and traffic. I was just wondering from um our city manager, is that planned anytime in the future?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, it is planned, I, I can't remember the exact date, but it is, it is teed up in a future agenda item, like in the next uh, either the next one or the one after, I, I'm sorry, I don't have that information handed.
Okay. Um, at this time, I'd like to um request a future agenda item for a uh, a closed-door session for the evaluation of the city manager a- as a six-month review.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. Um, ci- uh, city, um, uh, ma- Madam um Clerk, can you, can we have a vote on that, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, but I hope we have an opportunity to talk about the process first at some point.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I would like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of Warren Sheldon. Um, re- uh, longshore, very much involved in the longshore uh for many, many years in a leadership and management capacity. The meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you, everybody.